We will start our meeting. Welcome, everyone. Mauricio, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sefchen?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Josie, you want to lead us in the pledge? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Rabbi Baron, you're here tonight for invocation. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Dear God, Master of the universe, we stand humbled before you this evening as we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us collectively as a community and individually as private citizens. We are mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and guiding spirit, which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 22 years here in Sunny Isles Beach, and we praise you for this. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes, as you, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws after the great flood of Noah. These laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity, universal laws that provide a framework of law, order, and justice, which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to perform this sacred duty. We recognize that our decisions will have a lasting impact far into the future, so therefore, Almighty God, please provide us with a consciousness to constantly beware of your presence so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please guide us with the wisdom, intuition, and sensitivity to succeed, so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come into the future. Please guide our police department and city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future, and may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. Almighty God, in these times, we do not take our safety and security for granted. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. May everyone gathered here tonight and all the residents of Sunny Isles Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity, and let us say amen.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi. Okay, first order of business, do everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the October 17th Commission meeting? If so, could I hear a motion approved? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Could we roll our opening statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the Commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Okay, we've got a few changes to tonight's agenda. Item 10B, console proposal with CGA as additional information. We have three add-on items. Item 10I is approval of a console proposal with CGA. Item 10J, an agreement with Atlantic Broadband. And item 10K, an agreement with Don Casino Productions for talent acquisition. Do I hear a motion to approve the changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, agenda's been updated. Okay, great. Our first item is our annual photo contest winners. I'm always amazed at the great photographers we have in the city, and I think our calendar this year reflects that, so here we go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. Each year, the city hosts a photo contest, asking residents and visitors to submit their best shots showcasing the beauty of Sunny Isles Beach. Seventeen photos are selected from the contest for the 2020 desktop calendar. Submissions are accepted year-round, and many photos, even those that aren't selected, are used throughout different city platforms, including the city's quarterly magazine, The Living Magazine, as well as our city website and social media. This year, we received over 400 submissions, photo submissions, by 61 local photographers, so very impressive. Personally, this is one of my favorite projects to work on, as it's co-created with our residents. The residents are involved, are as involved in the process as we are. And the final calendar is an astonishing representation of the city's stunning architecture, beautiful parks, the Atlantic Ocean, and our gorgeous city views. At this time, I would like to invite Elaine Yish, our communications coordinator, to present our 2020 winners. Elaine has worked countless hours, along with Miranda Tarr and our team, to produce this calendar for you, which I believe is truly the best one yet.
Excellent. Thank you. Elaine?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission, members of city staff and the community. The 2020 calendar, she mentioned, we had the most photographers ever submit. We did not have the most photos. A lot of people only sent a couple, which was actually turned out to be good shots. We don't usually start out with a theme as we're going through the photos, but one tends to emerge. This year, it emerged as Natural World, sort of how they stacked up against the man-made structures, how they complemented each other. So a lot of the shots we chose were nature versus, you know, man-made. One of our returning photographers, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, ended up earning three spots because of her great talent capturing our beautiful sandy beaches, the native plants, the waves, and our beach life. As Kathy mentioned, we use photos other places besides on the calendar, and in fact, some of them aren't considered winners, they're runners-up, but they work out well on our social media and other places like ads. So I'm going to get started, and photographers, as I call you up, stay up here, and then we'll do a group shot at the end, and then as you leave, I have some calendars in a bag for each of you. The very first photographer is a returning photographer. His name's Mykola Kodorowsky. I don't, I think he was going to come, but I'm not sure if he's here. The shot was called Cobalt Sea, and that's underneath our cover. And we've used his photos a lot in The Living Magazine. He takes a lot of good shots of our resorts. The next page is Ocean Sunrise by Lisa Enchendia. She's here.
All right, there she is. Hi, Lisa.
She's a new contributor. She captured the classic Sunny Isles Beach sunrise, showing off our pier in its best light. So there's nature with a structure, man-made structure. January, this is Beatrice Singer, and she's not here. It's called After the Storm. I thought this was a great shot. Who would think a storm cloud would make a good photo? Well, apparently, she could see that the textures here made a great composition. February, we have Tranquil Dusk by Kyle Fallonbaum. He could not make it, he's out of town. He's a new contributor, and many of his photos fit our theme this year, and I sort of like this one because it has the tiki huts, which is, shows a little bit of history of Florida. March, Waves in the Sky, Deborah Newport. She actually is also out of town. She's a returning photographer. She always frames her shots in a very artsy way, and she takes pictures of sand, waves, lifeguard towers, even one time took a picture of a bicycle parked in the sand, and somehow it just worked. And we really appreciate the time she takes to compose her photos. April is Sunrise at the Tower. It's another one by the lady that's not here. This is showing the vegetation that helps hold the sand on the beach, and it's showing a very modern lifeguard tower with solar panels and the antenna for the Wi-Fi, so goes with our theme. May is the glistening green sea, Erlan de la Jere. All right, I probably butchered his name, but he has a really good eye, and you can tell he loves the sea. His shots didn't make the calendar sometimes, they're so good, they just didn't work with what we needed, but my favorite one that he sent this time, he was under the water doing a selfie, so he did a selfie, and that one, that one will probably show up on social media somewhere. And we do give credit on social media if you take the shot, if you send us your Instagram handle, so we can tag you. June, Floaty Fun, Alodia Hallman. This one just made us all laugh.
All right, very nice.
We loved it.
Yeah, great contrast of colors.
It's, and it's, you know, man-made and the nature there, and she only submitted two photos, and she won, yeah.
I thought it was going to be the other one.
Oh, no, this one made us laugh. July, Park Geometry by Alex Vineker. He's a returning photographer. He's had many shots in our calendars. He, he's another one that takes time to compose something, and he really, you know, this is something that people in Winston Towers see every day. Who would have thought that this is a calendar-worthy shot, but it is. And, oh, he picked the name. Some people name them, some don't, but he named this one himself, which was great. August, again, we have Beatrice, and she's not here. Her name that she, we changed the name of her picture. She said, you know, Falls, Falls, Waterfalls in the Palms, and we decided to name it Palm Falls, a little play on Niagara Falls, the joke, yeah. Anyhow, so she's, she's been on three times, and I told her she had to watch this online since she couldn't be here. September, Beach Patrol, Kyle Fallonbaum. Again, who would think to take a picture of the lifeguard tower from a pie? Not a lot of people, and, and there's great contrast in nature and man-made items there. So, side note, if you do happen to get your pictures in our Living Magazine, we do give photo credit on Page Six, so. October, we call this one City Textures. John Burgos, he's a new one. We actually caught, he caught our eye on Instagram, and we said, hey, why don't you enter our contest? So he did, and he sent in a lot of really nice shots, and we picked this one, it goes in with our theme. November, Teal Tranquility, Angela Terranteva. She's new this year, and we really liked her use of color, and we've got the red umbrellas and the teal, the water.
Beautiful.
She knows how to frame a shot, that's for sure. December, Morning Meditation. This is Sunny Sabato. He's been on our calendar multiple times. He's also graced the cover of our Living Magazine multiple times, and he's taken an everyday common object, putting it against the beautiful Atlantic Ocean, and it works great for him, and it worked great for us for our theme. Thank you. Photographer Paige, Nature's Glory. This is the guy that was under the cover, Mykola. And his, this picture is actually going to be seen in the spring issue of The Living Magazine, for sure. City Information Page is The Prism Over the Pier, Anthony Broca. I don't think he could make it tonight. He was in our calendar last year, too, and I was amazed at this shot, because look at all the activity, look at our pier. It's not just fishing, there's boating, there's people, you see people on the, on the beach, and you see our buildings, and you see a beautiful rainbow. Those are really great, he was in the right place at the right time. The back cover, Golden Glow, Harry. Harry's been submitting since we started this contest, Harry Fromm. He's a retired purser for Pan Am Airways, no longer in existence. He's an officer in a charitable organization called World Wings International. So between his charity work and traveling the world, he finds time to take pictures of his beautiful hometown. So David's going to take a picture. That's it.
Great job. Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
David feels the pressure of lining the shot up, since you guys did such a good job. You can see. Yeah, he's, he's under a lot of pressure right now, so. Yeah, a lot of pressure, see? You can see. Okay. We good, Dave? Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks very much. Pleasure. Thank you so much. Good to see everybody. Pleasure. Okay, congrats to all the photo contest winners. So before we go on to our zoning hearing, we've got a couple special guests, I'm going to put them on the spot, I'm going to embarrass them a little bit, but we have two visitors from our sister city in Taramina. Christian and Katiana, stand up. So, there we go. So they're here from, all the way from Taramina, Sicily, and, and they came in for, they, they were up, actually up in New York on a family trip, and they came down for, we invited them for Thanksgiving, so they'll be here for the week. So welcome, you guys. Welcome to Sunny Isles. So, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to our zoning hearing, and I've got an opening statement. We've got a few items here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has four zoning applications, and these matters, the Commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence, as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from city staff, and then from the applicant. Not for this, I'll allow anybody from the audience who's been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal, so please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement. Thank you.
In accordance with the LDRs of the City of Sunny Isles Beach--
Okay, shh, shh, folks. Hold on. Let's, yep. We good? Okay, sorry, Mauricio, I heard a lot of chatter.
In accordance with the LDRs of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in the newspaper, notices have been mailed, and posted on the properties. All persons wishing to speak at this hearing, please raise your right arm to be sworn in.
So if you filled out a public speaker card, just please raise, raise your hand. Thank you. Mauricio?
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth is helpful to you, God? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with item 6A, Public Supermarket. Mauricio?
Item 6A is a request by Publix Markets for the property located at 18320 Collins Avenue for a signed variance.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, application number PC 2019-06. It is for Public Supermarkets Inc., located at 18320 Collins Avenue. This application is requesting a variance in the number of wall signs. The code allows only two wall signs, they are currently in place, and they are requesting a third one. This is a request to Section 265-56B. The applicant has provided two options for the location of the third proposed sign, requesting approval for the, the one located on the east wall of the existing supermarket. Based on our staff review, the application is consistent with the city comprehensive plan, and with, in general, with, consistent with the city's land development regulations. The variance standards pursuant to Section 265-63.1C of the city code have been met. There are three signed various standards when we have to review this request. The three are that the variance is not contrary to the public interest, the second one, that special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant, and the third one, that the little enforcement of the provision of this chapter may result in unnecessary hardship. Therefore, staff believes that option one of the applicant, since it's not adjacent to any residential neighborhood, therefore minimizing the negative impact of this proposed signage, staff recommends approval for the variance with conditions stipulated in the staff report. So next, the applicant will continue with the argument for this variance request.
Mayor, before we continue--
Yes.
Is there any ex parte communication with--
Anybody, speak to anybody about the Publix sign? Nope, I know I didn't.
Thank you.
Alex, we're good? Okay, no ex parte communications. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jennifer Ronnberger. My company is GoPermit, and I'm here on behalf of Publix. Do you need my address?
Your address.
Yes, my address.
That's for the record.
Sure. 51 Meadows Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436.
Thank you.
We recommend, we agree with staff's recommendation for approval, and I just want to let you guys know how this, how this came up. It came up for a couple of different things. First thing is, the president and CEO of Publix came to this location, and he went to the building, and he just drove right past it, because as you're going north on Collins, all it does is, you know, you see the gas station, and then you just see the building, and it just looks like a parking garage. So until you pass it, if you're coming south, that's a totally different story, but that's the issue. So in talking to other, you know, people at the store and everything, they've been hearing from people that some of the seasonal residents are also feeling the same thing, that they can't see it, so that's why we're asking for this. Okay, so if you have any questions--
It's interesting, because my comment was going to be why they didn't come in during site plan application and ask for the extra sign, because that would have been the time to do it, but--
They didn't realize.
But I get it. Okay, but we appreciate the explanation, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, any, any questions for the, for the representative? No?
I have a question.
Larissa?
When, when you were submitting the site plan, was it considered where the signs were going to be put? Did you take into account where you would place them and how you would drive up and down Collins?
When the building was, in the beginning, you're saying?
Mm-hmm, because it got, it was moved, it was further back. So when it was further back, you can obviously see it, because you're looking that way, but as it gets closer to Collins, obviously, it's harder to see. Was that a consideration at that time?
Not at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments before we ask for a motion? Alex, do you have any comments? Dana? No?
No comments.
No? Larissa?
Um, no.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval? Do I have a motion? No? Anyone?
I'll, I'll move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mauricio, voice vote?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sefchen?
No.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The zoning application is approved.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for coming. Item 6B?
Item 6B is a request by A3 Development LLC for the property located at 17901 Collins Avenue for a site plan modification. And are there any ex parte communications for this item?
I'm sorry, for which?
Which one is--
For item 6B, which is A3 Development, Estates of Aquilina.
Estates of Aquilina.
Yeah, no. I haven't had any conversation regarding this one.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
No? Okay. Claudia?
Application number PC 2019-08. It is, as Mauricio has mentioned, A3 Developments LLC. This is a site plan modification, and they are modifying their standing resolution number 14-C-144, adopted in September 18, 2014. Resolution number 15-C-153, adopted in April 16, 2015, and resolution number 18-C-165, adopted in April 19, 2018. Under this site plan application, basically, they are seeking to decrease the density of the two towers from 248, that they got approved, to 246, so it is a decrease of two units, so less, of, less density, what they've got approved originally. In addition, the applicant is increasing, is requesting to increase the height for the two towers. The south tower request is going to approximately increase by four feet and three inches, bringing the total height of the south tower to 646 feet and 9.5 inches. The north tower request is, is requesting an increase of 25 feet and six inches, bringing the north tower to 667 feet and 3.5 inches. As you know, in the east side of Collins Avenue, we don't have a high restriction, and we base our approval under the Feral Aviation Agency, and these two towers are still under the threshold that the FAA will allow them to go. Staff has reviewed the site plan modification application pursuant to Section 265-18, which include the decrease of the residential, and a decrease of the height for the two towers, and staff is recommending approval for this site plan with the conditions stipulated under the staff report. And applicant will continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Claudia.
Hi, excuse me, good evening. My name is Eve Bootses, and Neeson Kazdin, who is my boss, is actually stuck on Collins, right by Bell Harbor. There's some festivities going on, so I apologize for his being late, but I am here on behalf of the Estates of Aquilina and A3 Atlantic Boulevard LLC. Just as a personal note, this is the first time I've been on this side. I usually sit in that seat, but in Miami Beach, for all those zoning matters. It's a very simple application, I think it's pretty clear what we're looking for. It's a reduction in two units for the entire site. They're from the south tower, so it'd be 153 units on that location, and it's an increase in height of four and a half feet or so on the north tower, and on the south tower, the 25 feet. And the reason for that is they're adding additional ceiling height to the penthouse and the private suites on the, during the top-- I'm short, I'm sorry.
We see, it's okay. We see you. Don't worry. Don't worry. Rick, Rick does it to everybody, so--
And he's much taller than I am.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have any questions? I don't mean to belabor it.
How, just, I'd love to know how the city got to FAA height in the first place. I know Cliff is over there, but I'm just wondering why this wasn't in the original, what made, I mean, 25 feet is a pretty high--
On the one tower.
Yeah, I mean, the four feet, I can understand, but 25 feet's a little--
The reality is, FAA height's 700, and we're a good portion under that, so that's great, but the reason is for the needs of the condo unit owners that are asking for the changes.
So this is driven just by the market? It's not--
Ceiling heights.
That's it.
Ceiling heights, yeah, not additional density, so.
And the direct, so there's no, there are no buildings on the west side that are impacted on this? There's no direct view? This is where, this is basically faces where the, the gas stations are, and--
I don't see any changes, really. I don't think it would be noticeable from the west side of Collins--
City Hall, Chevron Station.
Yeah, the gas stations, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you turn that around, so that we, the people, the audience could see, please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can turn both of them around.
Thank you.
Yeah. There you go. Any other questions? We, we have a public speaker, so is there any other questions for the applicant?
And so I just wanted to clarify, so this is cutting down two actual units?
Units, yes.
Okay.
It's a reduction of two units.
Okay, great.
Is this Aquilina?
Aquilina, yeah. The Aquilina under construction, the one, the one across from City Hall.
That is correct.
Yeah.
The one tower is already pretty--
It's the one that's, yeah, it's already almost built.
There's Neeson.
There he is.
You're right, just in time, just in time.
The, the only thing we felt good about was, it wasn't because of Elaine blockage that you were late, Neeson, I just want you to know, just for the record.
It wasn't us.
That's right. And that's the only thing that we, that we were feeling good about. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we have a public speaker. Ryan Poliakoff? Ryan? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate it. My name is Ryan Poliakoff. I'm with the law firm of Backer, Boot, Poliakoff &amp; Folster. Ryan Poliakoff? Ryan? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate it. My name is Ryan Poliakoff. I'm with the law firm of Backer, Boot, Poliakoff &amp; Folster. Address is 400 South Dixie Highway, Suite 420, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. Our firm represents 1801 Collins Avenue Condominium Association. It is the condominium association that manages the condominium elements of the Trump International property, which is directly north of the Aquilina construction site. And as you can imagine, our client has been very heavily impacted by this construction, both the residents who live in the property, as well as those who rent out their units through the hotel element of the condominium. And they are opposed to this modification. One of the big reasons they're opposed to this modification relates to the element, the impact of the construction, and especially the construction noise. The City of Sunny Isles Beach Code of Ordinances, at Section 193-6, has limitations on construction noise, and it provides for specific hours that construction may be completed. It also provides, at Section 193-8, for a waiver of construction noise. And that section provides that waivers may be granted in exceptional circumstances. And it provides that no waiver should be granted unless there are certain findings, including that there is a unique hardship. Well, in this construction project, Coastal Construction has requested waivers on a monthly basis since its inception, in perpetuity, and those are routinely granted. These waivers have never explained an extraordinary situation or hardship. In fact, it is by definition not an exceptional circumstance if they are requesting the waiver day in and day out, every single second, of construction. In this case, A3 has come to the commission to ask for an addition of 25 feet to the building, four feet to the other building. That extends the timeline of construction. So now, not only is it going to take longer to build these buildings, but it's taking longer with extreme construction hours that are heavily impacting our client. Our client, for those reasons, is opposed to the modification.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, comments from the dais? Alex?
So I just have a question for you, sir. So the main issue, the main concern for your client is the waivers regarding the hours of the construction that's taking place?
Yes, that's a major concern. The idea of tacking onto this project and having these really imposing hours go on even longer is just untenable to them. They can't tolerate this anymore, and they asked me to come to express their concerns.
Okay.
So what are some of the hours that are being...
Well, I mean, for example, I have seen requests from Coastal, because they are sent to our office, that extend anywhere from 8:00 PM to sometimes 10:00 PM on the Monday through Thursday period. I've seen requests from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM on the Friday deadline, and from 6:00 PM to sometimes 8:00 PM on Saturdays. And by the way, I'm not talking about one-time waivers, for example, pouring where you have to work overnight. We get that. That you have to do from time to time. These are daily waivers. Every single day, they are going over the construction times and the ordinance, day in and day out, month after month. Every two weeks, I get another request for a waiver, and they're routinely granted.
All right. So the main issue is really the hours?
That is a very serious concern for them, yes.
Okay.
To me, I don't see how that's really on point. I mean, the height, the issue of how high the building is, I mean, would that extend construction one week, three days? I'm not sure, but it seems your argument is not exactly on point as to the actual application.
Well, they're concerned that any time you are making this construction go longer and building more 25 feet on one, four feet on the other, takes more construction time. And they oppose to the extension of the construction time because of the impact it's having on the property.
We understand.
Okay.
Neeson, did you want to rebut?
Yeah, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor. Neeson Kazdin, Bakerman, representing A3. As Commissioner Goldman points out, this is really not an issue for this evening. We're not seeking any waivers with regard to construction hours. The fact of the matter is, as you all know and can see, this is a very, very minor modification. It will not change the schedule. The south tower should be done within a year. I would also point out that expediting the construction of the tower, even if we do come in for waivers, has an overall benefit to the neighbors as well, to get this done faster. So we're always available to talk to the neighbors and address any of their concerns, but it's not really an issue for this evening. Thank you.
Understood. Larissa?
Can you, for the applicant, how long does it take to finish one floor, approximately? Do you know? How long does it take to complete one floor?
About a week.
About a week, right. So if you're cutting down an actual number of units, does that make a difference? Does that shorten it or lengthen it, because you're going up in height? It seems like they're...
I'd ask Rick to come forward. Rick, would you come forward, please? You have to speak on the microphone.
The schedule's actually not changed at all. It's a few feet on columns, and it's not an extra slab or an extra floor. So actually, we're doing a little better. Right now, we're 12 weeks ahead of schedule.
Right.
And we are now pouring three floors every two weeks. So we are doing everything in our power, and we're working harder and working fast to try to get done ahead of schedule. That's our objective.
Thank you.
Understood.
For the record, that's Rick Chitwood, who's Director of Development and Construction.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have both parties talked or discussed any of these issues concerning the hours that are, the working hours?
We have talked at one point. We were not able to come to a resolution. We haven't talked in a while, but we may do that.
Okay. I think you'll be talking soon.
Yeah, right.
Jennifer?
No, no comments.
No comments? Okay. I do agree that... Yeah, yeah, we can put the boards down now, thanks. Thank you. Excellent, thank you. So I do agree it's two sets of issues. You know, typically, with extended hours, if there's agreement with the neighbors, I know the building official tends to work it out based on the whole point of, you know, of the timing, as Mr. Chitwood pointed out. So, but I understand the issue of the extended hours, and I think that, I understand why you came for the forum. I think that regarding what they're asking for relative to extended hours, it's probably not material, but I think what you raised, I think you raised an issue that staff needs to look at and basically make sure that we get the two parties together, because clearly the association has an issue. I know they were working together, because this issue's been brought to my attention a few times, and I know that representatives from the association have been trying to work with representatives from the Trump group over time. I thought it had been resolved, or calmed down, at least, I should say. So these things seem to never get resolved, but they seem to get, you know, it seems to be kind of a mutual standoff sometimes. So Chris, what I would recommend is if we could, you know, get these folks together.
Yeah, we did. What you're referring to was pretty early on in the process.
Early on, yeah.
And it was more geared towards the early morning hours that were ultimately eliminated. But we'll assist with that.
But usually, we can sort it out. But so, but thank you for coming, Ryan, and voicing your client's concern. Okay, with that, do I hear a motion for approval? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Neeson, you get to brave the traffic home now. Okay, good. Thank you for coming. Okay, we move on to item 6C.
6C is a request by Centropet Beach Developers LLC for the property located at 16690 Collins Avenue for a waiver of the moratorium approval.
Claudia?
This is a moratorium waiver approval for the Milton Office Building located at 16690 Collins Avenue, application W 2019-01. The City Commission imposed a building and zoning moratorium in the Town Center District area pursuant to ordinance number 2019-541, passed and adopted September 19, 2019. Under Section 4 of this ordinance, any property owner has the right to request a waiver within 45 days after adoption. This waiver request by Centropet Developers LLC was received on October 11, 2019, which will permit the process in consideration of a site plan modification for the project located at 16690 Collins Avenue. The application for the waiver will allow us to address the effect of 25 parking spaces at the applicant project. Such modification, if the waiver is approved, will not detrimentally affect or be inconsistent with the regulations that will be created and adopted, and will not impair the public health, safety, and welfare of the community at large. This is not a recommendation regarding the site plan modification or variance requested as part of any other application, but merely a recommendation that the commission grant a waiver of the moratorium for this specific project. So this is nothing related to the project itself. It's just to take consideration if we could hear the site plan modification and variance for this project.
Claudia, could you also say this has nothing to do with intensity or density in the Town Center District? Because we have a building moratorium, so again, I don't want to see a newspaper article next week, you know, that we're waiving our moratorium, so...
As I read in the ordinance, actually, waivers are usually included. They are part of the common draft of ordinances. So in this case, it's affecting only 25, if you approve the waiver. We will be addressing only 25 parking spaces within the project for the Centropet, nothing to do with square footage, the number of units, the size of the building, the height of the building, et cetera.
Your lips to God's ears. Thank you. Okay. So do we hear from the applicant?
The applicant?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Mr. Manager, Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney. My name is Cliff Shulman. I'm an attorney with the law firm Wyss, Sirota &amp; Helfman at 2525 Ponce de Leon Boulevard in Coral Gables, Florida, 33134. I want to start out with a note of appreciation and grateful. The waiver could have been on this month's agenda, and then the variance on next month's agenda. Staff was kind enough to recognize, in our case, the need for speed. And so we would not lose a month, which would be very important, as Mr. Milton will explain. So we are most appreciative, Chris, and staff, that it's on the same agenda at this point in time. I'd like Joe Milton, the principal, to basically address the need for speed. Joe?
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, it's great always to be here in front of you. The reason, we have accelerated the construction of this job considerably, since we have our famous tenant, Mr. Carl Icon. And our accelerated pace took us from getting a CO, a TCO, usually you acquire first, the first quarter next year, to getting it this December. So due to the agreements I have with Mr. Icon and certain things I had to put in the contracts, that he would be able to be in the building by January, timing is of an issue. So that's why I'm really appreciative of staff, not just for this. I mean, staff has just been incredibly helpful throughout the whole process. When you have a tenant of this magnitude of demand, so much, I just can't speak enough about the city manager, the building department, they've all been great. They've all been very helpful to push this through. So that's the reason why there was such a need to get in here as soon as possible and be in front of you to be explaining it.
Understood. Okay, so first, we're dealing with the moratorium waiver request, and then we're going to hear about the site plan modification. Any questions?
Let me add one other thing, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
By granting this waiver, and then hopefully the variance thereafter, this will allow this project to get its TCO before the end of the year, which means that it will go on the tax rolls for next year. And Mr. Milton estimates that the tax, ad valorem taxes would be over $2 million. So the sooner for the city's benefit that this thing gets TCO'd, the better to get it on the tax roll.
So if you want a really compelling argument, it will stop the lane closures on 163rd Street and Collins.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Right out of my mouth. You took those words out of my mouth.
Nobody cares about money around here.
We just want to know when the lane closure's going to stop. That's all we care about.
There we go.
What's the lane closure?
That's right, there we go.
I just wanted to keep Neeson out of the room.
I fully understand. Any questions regarding the site plan modification? I'm sorry, the moratorium waiver?
The waiver.
So, any comments? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Someo.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
No.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Okay, so we move on to the actual site plan modification. Claudia?
Are there any ex parte communications for this item, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Larissa?
Nope.
Got it.
Application number PC 2019-10, Centropet Office Tower, is a site plan modification for a parking size variance. The applicant is applying for this site plan modification of an approved site plan. The site plan consisted of a development of three, in three phases. Phases for Centropet 1, Park Towers, which is the second one, and this one is the third phase for the entire phase project. The applicant is requesting to reduce the width of the size of parking spaces. In this tower, it is required that they have 280 parking spaces. Under our code, parking spaces, according to Section 265-46A 7A, parking spaces are nine feet in width and 18 feet in depth. When we heard that this issue was occurring, we tried to figure it out within the architect if these spaces could be relocated within the site, or had any other relief to accommodate the ten parking spaces that they were being affected. Unfortunately, they have a tough spot in this area. The proposed width reduction does not affect the total amount of parking spaces. Minimum, the minimum amount of parking spaces is being met. That, for us, it was a very important topic. In addition, the applicant agreed and recorded, under Miami-Dade Clerk of Courts Document Book 3061, page 25, a declaration of restrictions and grant of easement, which is under Section 7. The applicant agreed to provide 24-hour valet parking services for the entire project. So all the parking spaces, whether they are nine feet, eight feet and a half, eight feet, 10 inches, they're all going to be served via valet company. In conclusion, the parking spaces size variance for the 25 parking spaces does not negatively impact nor modifies the operation of the parking garage, and neither has an impact to other properties around that area. Based on this review, finds that this application is consistent with the City Comprehensive Plan and generally consistent with the Land Development Regulation. Therefore, staff is recommending approval for the site plan modification and for the parking size variance.
Okay, who's up next? Ed Cliff? Cliff?
Yeah, I'm still Cliff Shulman, and I still work at the same place, but not much anymore. Milton Towers at 16690 is an unusual project in a number of ways. You're all familiar with the site. It's going to be the first Class A office building in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. But realistically, from a developer's point of view, it's what we call a very tight site. I mean, it's just the configuration of the site is unusual. The setbacks from the baywalk and the entrance to the baywalk, and from the busiest intersection in the city, makes it a very difficult site to work with. Again, and I want to emphasize what the mayor already did. We're not asking for an increase in floor area ratio. There's no density issue here, because density is residential units, and there are no residential units in this particular project. No increase in height, no decreases of required parking, excuse me. It's also unusual in that, let me read into the record, a letter I received today from the city attorney, from RK Centers. Dear Mayor and City Commissioners, please be advised that I am the largest retail shopping center owner in the city, and I fully support, support...
I don't believe it, so I'm only kidding.
Fully support the Milton Office Building parking variance that is being heard at your November 21st, 2019 Commission meeting. As I understand, out of the 280 parking spaces, 25 will only be eight and a half feet, I currently have two shopping centers in the city that have opened with parking spaces eight and a half feet wide, and we've never had an incident due to the size of the space. Furthermore, the Milton Office Building will be valet, so the vehicles in these spaces will be parked. Letter of support, signed by Renan Katz. We are very grateful, by the way, for that letter of support. How did this happen? Let me have Ed, our architect, Ed come up with Joe Milton, and explain what gave rise to this particular issue and how it arose.
Thank you. Joe?
Obviously, I have to go on the record thanking Renan Katz. So Renan, if you're seeing from somewhere, thank you very much for that letter of support. So in construction, it's what I've been doing all my life, graduated civil engineer, I'm a general contractor, things like these happen, it's not something you can prevent, it's not something you can foresee. The geotechnical of this site, similar to Saint-Tropez, that's immediately adjacent, and Park Towers, and really for the whole area here of Sunny Isles, I mean, I use the same geotechnical engineers, going back to Sands Point, 1993, they've done every single job for me here. When we started to build in Saint-Tropez, we realized that, you know, when you drill these boring samples, you drill spots, they lay them out over certain areas, as an engineer, this is a reasonable way to figure out what is the geotechnical structure of the soil going down as far as you need to go to catch, find real rock, a rock that can actually sustain high-rise building over a, over basically a pond. I mean, here, there's no solid rock here, it's not like, you know, if you're going to brickwell downtown, you can actually pull the 25-story building right on the rock, it's right there at grade level, but here, you have to go find it, and you got to go down between 80 to 150 feet to find that rock. So Saint-Tropez, we went ahead and built that, and we didn't have any issues with the rock. The rock was exactly as it was designed by the geotechnical engineer, they said it was going to be at a certain level, the rock was going to be, the soil around it was fine, was stable, and the building wouldn't settle, and it worked out perfectly. Park Towers, totally different situation, for some reason. When we went and started installing piles, we would lose the piles, that means we drilled the hole, we go to put in the grout, and dropped the steel cage, and the grout would just go everywhere. It was like if the soil was like Swiss cheese, it had holes everywhere in there. So we had to go back in and pump sand to fill in these holes, so then we could actually go back in and drive the piles. That created issues for us, because when you have these geotechnical issues, it only, it's reflected in the structure. So it got reflected on the structure there, and we ended up losing parking spaces. And we realized that really late in the game, I mean, we realized that at the point of TCO, and zoning guided us through this and helped us get through this, it's the first time it ever happened to me, so it's something that I had really a history of understanding how, you know, the columns and sheer walls did get wider, and we ended up losing parking spaces. We were able to resolve it by reallocating spaces throughout the building, Park Tower is a much bigger platform. But considering we had that issue of Park Towers, when we started driving piles here, we had the same issue with the piles, just losing them completely through the foundation. It was extremely porous, we had to go back in and fill in all the voids with sand, and then do the piles. Well, there were two areas specific, if you can point out the two areas, where we had this issue, and it grew the columns and the sheer walls.
You mean the thickness in the column and the sheer wall grew?
Yeah, the thickness of the columns, the thickness of the sheer walls grew, so it cut into our parking space. Now, as soon as we stripped this, because this is all framed and formed, as soon as we stripped it, and I was talking to Ed, as soon as we were aware of this, I said, look, as soon as we strip it, let's take measurements, let's get ahead of the curve, take the measurement immediately, and let's get in to speak to the zoning department. And that's exactly what we did. Soon as we could get in there, we got in there and spoke to the zoning department, told them, look, this is a problem. Now, right now, our measurements are coming out to eight foot nine for parking spaces and eight foot 10 for parking spaces. I mean, we have a good parking dimension here of nine feet, and I'm not taking anything away from it, I think it's fantastic. All the municipalities I've built on don't happen to have that dimension, I mean, whether it's the city of Coral Gables, city of Miami, Miami-Dade County, Fort Lauderdale, they're all eight foot six, and Fort Lauderdale with the exception of being eight foot eight. But regardless, our intention here, and it's, our approvals from the beginning have been for nine feet, this was something that we could not have foreseen, staff could not have foreseen, nobody could have foreseen. It wasn't about a, an inspection issue, and it wasn't about a planning issue, it's just things that happen on a site. So the good thing is that we have them above the eight foot six, and we have them really between eight foot nine and eight foot 10, which is a really comfortable space, and yes, we do have 24-hour valet service in the building.
Okay. We, Joe, is that it? Good?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. We have a public, Cliff, you want to go again, because we have a public speaker?
Can I ask a question?
You want to ask him a question? Okay, sure.
I just have a quick question. Well, first of all, congratulations on Carl Icon, that's unbelievable and amazing, thank you for that.
Thank you.
When did you let zoning know?
When did we, Ed, when did you reach out to Claudia?
As soon as, I'll wait.
Hi, Ed.
I'll introduce yourself.
Yeah. I want to say, maybe it was about a couple months ago, what happened was that as soon as the building, you know, once, like Joe said, the, some of the tenants, and then the urgency to get the building built faster.
Accelerated construction schedule, yeah.
It started moving really, really fast in the construction. So as soon as we were able to strip down all the formwork, and there's a lot of formwork with all these sheer walls and things like that, that's when Joe said, let's make sure, let's go check it out. And we did that, we went, we measured every single situation throughout the entire building, and then we found these two, these two areas. Immediately, we did not call, because I wanted to make sure that we could resolve it within ourselves, and not have to come in front of the city. We were not able, I mean, this project from day one has been, we're counting inches, and this project has been tight, it's been difficult. And then that's when I sent Joe the email that, you know, we need to, there's no, there's no solution here, there's no way to pick up a space somewhere else, or, you know, or move things, you know, you can't move structure. So that was, then we made the call to the city, and then we presented the situation.
I have a question. So I just want to clarify or drill down on one point. So you have valet service, but don't you have designated parking spaces or slots for specific tenants? I mean, or do you have a combination of both, or is that everybody just drops their car off and the valet takes it up to the parking area? How does that work exactly, all your parking spaces? Out of the 280?
The tenants get assigned parking.
So how many spaces are assigned? So, but out of, how many are non, how many are assigned and how many are unassigned? Or general, or just for guest spaces or valet spaces that are unassigned?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
I think the question is, does everybody valet?
The actual numbers, I'm not going to be able to give you, but you'll be able to visualize with me telling you. Second to fifth floor, it's tenant parking, sixth floor is valet.
Okay.
Okay, because I have a, I have a reason why I'm asking.
Sure.
So I have a suggested, you know, modification or a suggested proposal on this, about this. So my feeling is, with a tenant space, a designated tenant space, where actually you can go in and drive your car into that space, they should all be nine feet, and then the 25 that are non-conforming, can they be designated only valet spaces, so they put the onus on, you know?
Yes, they can.
Okay, so that would be my, my, you know, proposal, my proffer, you know, way to, you know?
But that is a proposal.
To, no, but to make sure.
The only affected spaces are valet, correct?
So that's, my question is, are all, are the nine-foot clearance or the nine-foot spaces, those are all designated assigned spaces, so that nobody's really impacted, none of your tenants are impacted by that, by having a, you know, a shorter space? That's my question, can that, can that happen?
Yes, it can.
Okay, that would be, you know, that would be something that I would...
Yeah, it's a very fair request, I understand, I understand your concern, so yeah.
Okay, that's the kind of request that I'm looking for.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant, and I'm going to open the public hearing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Felix?
My name is...
Ed, take this sign down now, so folks can see, so, yeah, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Felix Gesner, I live in 215174th Street, apartment 1904, and I think this topic has set off a quite interesting debate that we can continue on, because in a way, you're setting a potential policy. So we know there's no such thing as free parking, right? Sometimes the cars are worth less than the parking space, especially in Sunny Isles Beach. And in the past several decades, the amount of cars has outpaced the growth of the population in the United States. So the frequency of ownership is starting to change, but we know some things, like you have that more urban, people living in urban areas own more frequency of cars than the suburban, that owners own higher frequency than the renters, and the elderly versus the young. So I think with the cost of construction, everything else, we have to maybe take a look at, this is an issue right here, I think it's good, because first of all, it encourages the more subcompact cars, which are more ecologically friendly, but also, I think it's time to review our demographics has changed, of requiring certain amount of spaces per certain amount of units. Because right now, it can reduce quite a bit, we have, of course, we have a tale of two cities, we have the oceanfront with very expensive real estate, where they do want the maximum amount of cars, but then we have something across, where in the future, especially with the development, you can encourage through your policies, whether you should control the size of a parking space, maybe reduce that, so you encourage more subcompact cars, also take a look at the cost, of reducing the cost of ownership in Sunny Isles Beach. So my bottom line is, is I'm actually all for it, I'm for more of a deregulation of looking at the law of requiring, because I believe that would reduce the ownership cost and have more affordable housing in Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you.
Got it, thank you, Felix.
Any questions?
Okay, no questions. I don't have any questions. Okay. So, do we want to hear, okay, public hearing is closed, Dana, you want to go first?
So for me, I would like to see that no tenant-assigned space is adversely impacted by what's considered non-conforming. So for me, I was actually an advocate of having interior building spaces be nine-foot to be conforming with, you know, surface lots or so forth. And that's really where I would like to see a proffer, something that, you know, when you have these designated spaces, if we're going to approve this, that the tenant spaces should all be nine, should have a nine-foot separation, and then the valet spaces, you know, that's, you can get those for, they would only be vari, and my question also to Stan Morris is, how would you enforce that? Is that something that you can, you know, kind of enforce to make sure that those spaces, the tenant-assigned spaces have the nine-foot clearance?
I'm sure they'll be more than willing to comply with what I can correct others to do.
Okay. It's 25 spaces, so, you know, okay.
Okay, great, thank you, Dana. Alex, any comments? Jennifer?
Well, I would prefer that all spaces comply with our standards, I think it's in everyone's best interest for the building not to lose any parking spots, because we don't, shortage of parking spots in your building means you having to find an off-site place for those vehicles, which puts them back on our streets, and I'd rather keep them in your building. So, you know, you find the appropriate accommodations, if you can keep the appropriate, the appropriate number of parking spots, I think that's a better solution than, than having vehicles that don't need to be on our roads, on our roads.
Thank you. Larissa?
Okay, I have actually a few statements and questions as I was thinking about this. I did not realize that some of these would be assigned, I thought this was 100% valet. So this is the first I'm hearing about this, so some questions come up. On the memo that's attached to this, you're requesting eight feet, six inches, however, the floor plan is at 810 for three spots on each floor, and 89 for two spots on each floor of the five floors, there's difference in the numbers. Why is that?
Yeah, I thought, what I read in what's being requested is nothing less than eight foot six. There was really no set dimension, it was just stated, nothing less than eight foot six, setting that criteria, that it would not be less than eight foot six. Currently, you have eight foot six spaces in, here in Sunny Isles.
No, no, I know, yes, I know that.
Right, so it's, yeah, we have them at eight foot nine, eight foot 10, you know, it's, I wish I could tell you that everybody is perfect, and that inch is, I mean, it's going to be right there, but you know what, that eight foot, that eight foot nine might be eight foot eight, the eight foot 10 might be eight foot nine, might be eight foot 11, when we, when we go back and measure. I'll tell you who's going to get it right, is your zoning department, because they're going to measure it like three times. So we, that's the measurements, we took eight foot nine and eight foot 10, it's not going to be less than eight foot six.
For those 25 spots.
For those 25 spots, everything else is nine feet, yeah, we're comfortable, we measured everything, you know, we're good with it, and all our tenants will have the nine-foot spaces.
Okay, and here's the other thing that I was, when I was looking at this, that I was considering, because I do agree that you can fit many cars into eight-six, not my truck, but many smaller vehicles. And by the way, I lived in Saint-Tropez in the 150, and I learned how to navigate that parking lot very well.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
I know how to get in and out of that place.
I had problems navigating that garage myself, it was...
The best thing about that garage is you can't get towed.
No, 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 there's no way.
So my question is, why not go about this asking for change in the ordinance, where if there's valet parking, allow that to be smaller, because that will give you more spaces overall? Because to me, this is more of an issue of, you guys are probably going to have more than enough spaces, the people that are going to be coming in here probably don't even have cars, if you're having a lot of people that are moving from Manhattan.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but right now, I feel that I want to keep my requests simple, timing is an issue, as I was explaining before, I mean, I need to get this TCO in December. Whenever you go in with ordinance changes, you're creating a lot more than just a simple variance stating the facts that, look, the nine feet didn't work out because things beyond my control, so, yeah, I'm stuck at eight foot 10, eight foot nine, so I'm asking, I'm asking for a variance to no less than eight foot six for these 25 spaces. I hear the concern of the commission regarding tenants should have nine-foot space, that's not a problem, we have more than enough spaces for the tenant count. So we had an entire floor just for valet, so we'll take those 25 spaces, move them up to the sixth floor, and relocate those 25 spaces to valet, it's a very simple modification. And I do agree with you, by the way, I don't think that that garage where it would be full, I think today's, today's consumer, the people will be going there, most of them are not going to drive. You know, I'm starting to see more and more and more of that trend happening, especially with my major, my major tenant is relocating from New York.
Right, yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And he's going to be taking his vote.
Yes, yes, he's going to be coming by vote, yeah.
Anything else? No?
And I would, I would like to also absolutely acknowledge Commissioner Viscar's concern about the lesser of the two evils, that the off-site parking is problematic, but I do want to also give props to, you've indicated that you're going to have some electric charging stations there, so that's always a...
Yes, yes, we are.
Six charging stations is the way of the future, so...
Six charging stations are going to be placed there for our tenants' use.
Okay, good, good.
So I'm just going to tack on two things. First of all, when we built our pier, we had the same issue, the pilings started disappearing because we had, we had, we had bad geotechnical, not bad geotechnical, but geotechnical that didn't reflect, so Chris, I don't know, were you here at the time? We had a monster change order for the pilings on the pier because of that issue, because of the length of the pilings, because they started drilling the pilings, and they lost them, and it was pretty amazing, you know? And so, so to Joe's point, soil conditions are unpredictable, and, you know, I was a builder at one point in my life, and so I suffered a lot of those ills. Frankly, this is the reason why we have variances, because, you know, traditionally, a variance is really for an engineering hardship, and it's exactly what happened here. This one happened to happen in real time. A lot of times, they come in ahead of time, a lot's a little narrow, you can't make a turning radius, you got a jig or something, Ed suffers that all the time, you know, as an architect. The second point I want to make is, really, this is internally his property, this is not like, these are not like real public parking places, so really, if Joe made them all eight foot six, it's a commercial issue for him, whether his tenants are upset or not upset, you know, over that, because really, it's not, these aren't spaces for the public in general, you know, these are spaces for his tenancy and his, you know, and his building. So I find, you know, very, I don't find much offensive with this one, is the bottom line, so, but I just wanted to point those issues out. With that, I will take a motion?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second. With the condition, with the condition...
With the condition, with Dana's condition, the undersized spaces will be designated valet. Okay, we're clear.
And you have insurance to cover any density, right?
We got it, we got it, got you covered.
It's your problem, not the tenant's, right?
We're not done, okay?
Just a quick question, are you, are you turning this building over, or you're, you're keeping it?
No, we keep it.
You are?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to keep it and manage it.
All right, okay.
I don't think you sell much, as I remember, no, no, not this kind of stuff.
Buy and hold.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, Mauricio? Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The application...
So, that's one of the first V-words we've passed in a long time, you know, unanimously.
Thank you.
I can tell you, the V-word doesn't go, doesn't go over big around here. So, thank you, guys. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no ordinances for first reading tonight. We have one ordinance for second reading, which is our rental property fees. So, Mauricio?
9A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isle Beach, Florida, amending chapter 217 entitled Rental Property of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Sunny Isle Beach to amend section 217-9 to modify the manner in which fees for registration shall be adopted, providing for revocation of registration, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading.
Okay.
Mayor?
Stan?
Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the second reading of our short-term rental ordinance, which will provide us with some more enforcement power.
Okay, I think we kind of chewed this one up in the last meeting, yeah?
For single family.
For a single family? Yeah. Okay. Any, any comments for the second reading?
No. We're all for it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, yes, you did, I'm sorry, ma'am.
All right.
It's a long night. Okay, we are in resolutions. 10A is a resolution approving...
No, 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 we're voting on 9A. We just had a motion and a second, on the second reading for the rental property ordinance. You're getting like me, Mauricio, I'm rubbing off on you. You're a young guy.
It's a long day, man, it's a long week.
You know, so...
Okay. Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Adopted on second reading, very good. Okay, we move on to resolutions. Item 10A.
10A is a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the agreement with Calvin Giordano and Associates for professional planning and consulting services.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is going to be the fourth amendment to the agreement with Calvin Giordano and Associates for professional planning and zoning services. The city awarded RFQ 16-12-01 to Calvin Giordano and Associates under resolution 2017-265, and entering into a contract, contract in February 1st, 2017. This is the third option to renew the agreement for one more year, so this is going to bring us basically to February 2021. The term of this renewal, it will be up to 2021, and there is also an increase to the amount to the contract not to exceed $700,030. Please correct in my memo, my memo is, it reflects the old amount. We are bringing this contract to be approved at this time is because of the next item, so that's why we are bringing it right now to extend it and to increase the monetary threshold.
Any questions?
No questions from me.
Dana?
No comment.
Okay. So, we'll make a motion?
Wait, wait.
We need a motion.
There's a card.
Is there a, I'm sorry, Maggie?
There are public speakers on this?
Sorry, yes, there was one. There's two.
Maggie?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll again, once more, tell you that your fiduciary duty is to the city. It is important for you to ensure that people that are giving you advice are complying with the law. I am very disturbed that Calvin and Giordano not only took the first study for the upzoning when clearly, clearly, the upzoning was, and I believe that was $29,000. It's our money, and it should be used to employ the people that comply with the law. If you continue hiring city managers, and zoning directors, and legal consultants, and city attorneys and planners that give you wrong recommendations, you will continue to make mistakes. I am very disturbed that the city has not done an investigation as to the impact of these buildings that were noncompliant. I am very disturbed about the recommendation from Calvin Giordano to take the whole south and just up it to the maximum, including TDRs. Think about what you're doing. It isn't, we were told that the buildings were noncompliant, and we needed to take care of them. And taking care of them is if something happened, you can build what you have. No, now, if something happens, or people that have not even developed, they can build to the highest, and nobody here has taken accountability, has told this city, the people that care about this city, they haven't told us how that's going to affect our schools, our traffic. It's a nightmare. You see even the parking, beautiful tower, we all laugh. You wouldn't laugh if you had to take every single day, my son to school, I go four times, I take him in the morning, come back, go again, come back. It is a disgrace, and it used to be that Saturdays and Sundays were a little better. Continue to do this. Continue hiring and keeping a staff that are giving you recommendations that should not be. Giordano gave you the study telling you to upzone. Upzoning could not be, and you know it. And now, we are rewarding them by extending the contracts and going up to $700,000. To tell you the truth, no wonder he always does what the city staff and the manager and the mayor and the developers want, because they get their contracts. I need to remind you that the city and our sustainability, our traffic, our schools are the things that you need to concentrate on, not developers, and certainly not people that are giving recommendations that are wrong, and they continue to be wrong. So, it's one voice, but it's, I love this city, and I wish that what is happening was not happening, and I'm very disturbed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay. Any, public hearing's closed?
Okay.
Dana?
I agree with Maggie. I agree. It's very disappointing, the, it's disappointing to date, in, in contravention with the Waltrip report.
Okay, Alex, any comments?
No, no comments.
Jennifer?
No comment.
Okay. Marissa, excuse yourself. With that, I'll, I have no comment. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dana? Opposed? Okay. So, thank you. Okay. Item 10B.
A resolution approving a consulting proposal from Calvin Giordano and Associates, Inc. for public engagement services relating to the Town Center North area.
This proposal is from Calvin Giordano and Associates for public engagement for the, what we have depicted proposed for the Town Center North. Basically, what the company has done is, they're going to engage and assess the existing planning and zoning regulatory framework for the area, providing for outreach throughout interviews, workshops with the public, with all what is in the last techniques in relationship to public engagement. The final recommendations will be presented to the commission, and we will see from there the potential actions regarding our compliance, our zoning regulations for the Town Center North that we have to, we have to take. The proposal is for an amount not to exceed $68,480, and in the process of approximately to, the duration is for four months.
Okay. Any questions for Claudia before I open up the public hearing?
I also want to mention, I'm sorry, it's not in the memo, Sylvia Vargas, it is a principle from Calvin Giordano that is going to be taking the initiative. Sylvia has extreme experience in terms of the task at hand, which is for public engagement, so, and she is present tonight, so if you have any questions, she is here to address them.
And that's the resume that was circulated?
Yes.
Right, got it. Okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Maggie? Item 10B.
Again, to repeat myself, in August, we were told by the mayor that to ensure objectivity, you were going to get an independent report. As soon as the independent report came in, and it was contrary to what the city, mayor, commissioners, city manager, zoning director, legal consultants wanted to do, they went back to Calvin and Giordano, who has been your planner for 11 years, and who was your planner that never brought up. I believe that at the time, the city manager requested a study to upzone. At that moment, Calvin Giordano should have made you aware that you could not upzone. That to me, to now take that firm to conduct these studies to decide what to do with the north is wrong, and we should start at the density that is there, we should not start at zero. And again, I don't want to waste your time, I don't want to waste mine, but I feel my duty to let you know.
Thank you, Maggie. Any...
Hi, I have to give it to Maggie. I agree 100,000%. She's right on point. It's very, it's very disappointing what's happened and how, how this has all evolved, and I, I completely agree.
Any other comments?
No.
Nope. Alex, no other comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
No.
No. Commissioner Goldman's opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 10C.
A resolution awarding bid number 190801 to and entering into an agreement with Environmental Waste Services Group for storm water management system preventive maintenance services.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, we put out bid 190801 for storm water and catch basin cleaning. We had two bids, EnviroWaste was the lowest bidder, and they were also our previous contractor who does a really good job. This initial contract is for two years for a total of $400,000. It will only be spent as needed. It's kind of based on how much they actually have to clean out, so...
Okay. Any questions for Susan?
So important, such an vitally important function, so, very, very important and very supportive of this.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Susan, we had discussed this, but if you can clarify for everyone how part of this is paid for?
So, this is completely funded through your storm water fees. So, the storm water fees that are paid by every homeowner through your water bill covers the expense of cleaning our catch basins as well as other things.
So, it's, it's in the best interest of everyone to try to keep it clean?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And as we talked about, the less that goes in there...
That's right.
The less we have to pay to empty it.
Don't let them blow your yard debris down the catch.
They are not allowed to do that anymore.
I know, I know, but it's ridiculous, because these blowers are like unbelievable.
Yes. This company also provides us with the data that we need to complete our NPDS report each year to the county. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Susan?
No.
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10D.
A resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with the Celebration Source for event rides rental, extending the term of the agreement for a period of one year, and authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. Back in 2016, we put out a bid for event ride rentals. The bid was issued to Celebration Source. At that time, the contract was for three years, so this item is to extend that for one more year with an amount of $100,000. We use them for all, well, for many of our events for the public, teen events, we also use them for after-school program activities and for summer camp.
Any questions for Sylvia? Before we vote, I want to give Sylvia and her staff props for last Saturday night. That was a great music in the aisles. I think that we were all there, and anybody that missed it, who's watching in TV land, I would highly suggest you go to these events, because that was a great event. So, thank you very much.
The best one yet.
Yeah, that was absolutely the best one I think we've ever had. So, everybody who went and shaking their head, so, but Sylvia, and I know it takes an army to put these things on.
Excellent.
Absolutely. And local talent and fantastic talent, so it was even better. So, I felt like it was just...
The weather was beautiful.
Just a great night, so, okay. With that, I'll take a motion to approve item 10D.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10E.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to expend budgeted funds in an amount not to exceed $90,000 with the City of Hialeah to provide maintenance, repair, and storage services for the city's shuttle buses.
So, for our shuttle bus service, we have certain requirements that we have to meet from the grant funding that we got through the county. City of Hialeah meets those requirements for the maintenance, so we have this agreement with them. The agreement is currently good through May 2020. We will likely be renewing at that time, but this is to authorize the expenditure of funds for the year. The estimate for the maintenance, we have six buses, is about $90,000.
Any comments regarding the bus repairs?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. 10F.
A resolution approving a grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for the construction of the 174th Street Pedestrian Overpass Bridge.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is to enter into a grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to accept the $425,000 legislative appropriation we received last session.
Absolutely not. So, any questions for Catherine regarding...
So, when will it actually start?
The, the project?
Yeah.
That's gonna be a while. We're in the process of putting out the bid for the engineering and architectural work. Then, once we award that, we'll have plans made. We'll probably be going out to bid in probably about a year for it, or thereabouts, at some point.
And the DOT approval and...
So, what are we looking at, three years?
You're looking at two to 2023, possibly, as for completion.
At least three years.
Yeah, I'd say so. Yeah, I'd say so.
Doesn't the contract state 2024, or is that the outside date of completion?
It may say that.
The grant agreement? So, with these grants, we get 120 days after completion to submit all the paperwork, so it's typically three months after. So, we're saying March 2024. But these can change, and sometimes we'll amend the grant agreement depending on the construction schedule of the project.
Okay, I just did one.
Yeah, we've had it go both ways. Whether we were behind or ahead.
It's for each, if you don't, yeah.
Right, but we've amended them before.
Yeah, they've been pretty cooperative in amending those things, realizing it's hard to predict.
Okay. Free money. Free money. Exactly. Free money, so...
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Catherine.
Good.
Catherine finds the money, so thank you. Item 10G.
A resolution expressing support for the Florida Senate Bill 670, which would ban smoking on public beaches and public parks.
So, our folks from Taramina, take note. Can you see where you see? They're all smoked there, so like, you know? Yeah, I think I'd get run out of office if we proposed something like this in Taramina.
Well, unfortunately, this is a resolution. We can't propose it. This is in support of a bill that's being sponsored by Senator Gruders. This is the second year that he is proposing this in Tallahassee. As many of you know, I try to go there as often as possible to help us gain home rule and have more choices here locally. It's very hard to do that, and so this is very surprising that the senator is supporting this. This would allow, if passed, it would allow the county to make their own rules as to smoking on the beach, and based on the information that I've gotten, they are very supportive of this. And this would include county parks as well, and all state parks. Last year, it did not even go into committee, because he suggested that it would be a bill to just ban smoking altogether. This now allows at least a little bit of closer home rule advantage for us, because we start with the county, and eventually, what we want to do is be able to make these rules in our own city. So, while I would love to say that this means that there's no more smoking on the beach, this is in support of this bill, and I think this is really going in the right direction as far as what we want to do with the environment. And it's not just the plastic straws. More than anything, when I'm cleaning on the beach, I find the cigarette butts, and they're disgusting. So, I appreciate that Senator Gruders is doing this, and I hope everyone can support this.
Can you clarify? So, this resolution speaks to, as you mentioned, county rights. So, it wouldn't be us, it would be a county. We would, right.
Right.
The county has jurisdiction over the beach, but in terms of the state parks? So, what's the status of our parks? We're public parks, but we're not state parks? And we can't regulate or legislate or block smoking here on our... Are we considered a state... All of our park system is considered a state park?
No. Our parks are our parks.
So, in other words, we can't, we have, we ban, or we allow smoking on our...
Keith, this statute that he's attempting to amend specifically preempts cities and counties from regulating smoking anywhere.
Anywhere. So, it's not just, it talks about state parks, but it preempts us as a municipality from legislating or prohibiting smoking on our own public park system. So, we can't even currently prohibit smoking in our parks.
Correct. And even if, you know, to add on to Vice Mayor Svechnikov's comment, even if we could, we don't own the beach. The beach is in ours. The beach is the county's and the state's. So, we would have to, so to her point...
This brings us closer.
This is a multi-pronged approach. It would bring us closer, but to Vice Mayor's credit, you know, she focuses on home rule issues when she goes to Tallahassee, and those are the issues they are constantly trying to preempt us over. And so, it's frustrating, but I think this is another good step in that direction, so... Any other comments? Okay. Do we hear a motion to support this bill?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. 10H.
A resolution approving a sixth amendment to the agreement with HPF Associates, Inc. to provide professional consulting services.
Mr. Bunyan.
This is the continuation of Paul Abbott's contract to be our project manager on the undergrounding. It's slightly increased, because we're starting on Golden Shores simultaneously now, working on the plans for that. And our intention is, as we're finishing up, which is still a couple of years' worth of work on Collins, and the streetlights, as you know, are proving to be very challenging and time-consuming and expensive. The Golden Shores, we want to try to make some headway in there. So, besides the engineering work, and the plans, and the bidding for the actual construction, and get started, hopefully, before the end of next year. And hopefully, if we can, I'm not committing to this now, but if we can get the lighting study done sooner or later, we can probably get to work on the new streetlight plan there ahead of time.
Great.
So, Paul's gonna be doing double duty.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, all I can say is thank you for considering our continued involvement. It has been generally a pleasure. It's always been a challenge, but...
Now, you're lying, so...
No, I, working with this community has been one of the more rewarding challenges of my career. You have a great staff, and it's a wonderful place to be, and I thank you for this opportunity. I will echo the managers. We are pushing forward with Golden Shores, beginning the second week in December. We're going to begin, they're going to be doing door hangings, and we're going to start doing the surveys of the individual properties. And we are, and Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Manager, we are going to push forward with the earlier design of the street lighting for Golden Shores. It won't be a complete design. It'll be a complete design, it won't be a complete implementation, but we are going to show that neighborhood that we are committed, and we're going to make some things happen there much, much sooner than the old total project. But I really suspect that we will have shovels in the ground in 2020 in Golden Shores.
Great. That's great. Thank you. So, I made a joke today and called Paul Paul Bunyan, and so, and I made it in front of Claudia, and we recognized, he had the suspenders on, and I said to Claudia, I said, "You know who Paul Bunyan is?" And of course, she said, "No," because she's looking him up. She's from South America, she never heard of Paul Bunyan, you know? So, that was, that's why I was making the joke about Mr. Bunyan today. Any questions for Paul?
Yes. Paul, there was a mention of the streetlights. Can you please just go into that a little bit more, and what that means as far as the study, and how that affects the entire neighborhood? Because there have been obviously a lot of complaints about it being dark and...
Well, the challenge, as we are encountering right now in Collins, is where to get the energy from. Everything is fed overhead at the present time. We will design to the foot candle requirements. We are going to mirror the rest of the street lighting throughout the city. The decorative type poles, they'll be smaller, but they'll still be the high-pressure sodium, which gives that softer, more comfortable light, but in reality, a broader spectrum of light. We will, when I say we, it'll be an engineering study, of course.
I understand.
We will go in and do all of the foundations that we can that aren't in any conflict with the ongoing undergrounding. We will figure out a way, I don't have that answer, but we will figure out a way to serve the new lights from the overhead services that exist. It will mean going back and doing some retro fit work at a later time, but I don't have a number. I'd like to tell you that we're gonna get 80% of the lights up. I don't know that yet, but we will get, it will be a vast, vast improvement of what currently exists in that neighborhood.
And the door hangers, what are the door hangers going to say?
They identify to the community that we're, we, the engineers and my staff, will be visiting each home within Golden Shores to determine on the exterior of the home. No one needs to go into anyone's home. If the yard is gated or locked, we will need permission to go into their yard. But it's to identify where the electric meter is, and where the communication lines come in, so that as we design, we can bring a common conduit source into the each home. And this dictates where transformers become located, where power pedestals, where communication pedestals and all are located out in the right-of-way. And this is, we've done the initial, as you well know, the initial survey work with establishing right-aways and depths of existing utilities and all, but this now will pinpoint where the services will now come to the homes. The good news, many of the newer homes already are underground, and it's identifying where that service point is, so we don't redo those. We will take our service, our new FPL and communication services to those existing points within the properties.
Very good. Yeah. I think Golden Shores is, you know, so...
How long gives the work, or is it being...
A long time. Go ahead. Yeah. Yeah, this stuff takes a long time, so... Yeah.
Two years.
Couple of years?
At least two.
Yeah, Paul says at least a couple of years. No, I think that that's what he's surveying. I think that this is the point, this is the point of the surveying work.
That's the purpose of what we're doing now, is gathering the data, so that we can do it efficiently.
Yeah.
It may, it may sound, it may not even seem rational, the point that we start. We may start midpoint in the community and go down 189th. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do. We don't know. Until we know what the design from the power company is, and what the low voltage... The power, the power company is the big dog, and everybody else is the tail on that dog. But once we have that engineering study, then we'll be able to come back, and we'll report frequently on how we're approaching the community.
Okay.
But the idea is to move as quickly as we can, and particularly with the lighting. It's at least something that we can produce that improves the neighborhood as quickly as possible.
Thank you. That community has been waiting a long time for an upgrade.
I understand.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Paul?
Susan just reminded me of something. In addition to the hangers and putting out, you know, things that we put out periodically, we're gonna have a special place where people can send in questions, or, you know, any concerns they have. They can send it into sibfl.net/goldenshores, which will allow them to give us questions.
Okay.
Yeah, it was kind of hard to do something like that when you're dealing with Collins.
Is that right, Susan? No?
That doesn't sound right.
No, Susan's got that look on her face, like we're screwing up here.
You're close.
Go ahead.
We're encouraging everyone in the Golden Shores neighborhood to sign up for email alerts specifically for this project.
Specifically.
You can sign up for that email alert at sibfl.net/goldenshores. Kathy, if you're here and I said that wrong...
So, those will be specialized, those are specialized email alerts for that neighborhood.
For that neighborhood.
So, they can understand what's going on.
Absolutely.
And that's where all things Golden Shores are gonna be posted.
Correct, for this project specifically.
But people can email the city at any point at any time about any questions they have with...
Yes. At info@sibfl.net.
Got it.
Who do we go to next? Does Kathy need to add any detail?
The City of Sunny Isles send everybody alert, or store more than ask for the resident.
Excuse me? I'm sorry?
It'd be easy if Sunny Isles sent alert to all the residents of Golden Shores to let them know what's going on.
That's the door hangers. I think that that's...
No, that'll be on the alerts also.
The door hangers intended to give them a specific three-day window that the representatives will be near their homes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Paul?
No.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you, Paul.
And no one at this podium tonight has said it. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Happy Thanksgiving. That's right. See, I'm a single-track mayor, so, sorry about that.
10A is a resolution approving an increase in the registration for seasonal rentals.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this raises the fees for single-family registrations from $25 to $300.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10J.
A resolution approving an agreement with Atlantic Broadband Miami for the conversion of overhead wires to underground throughout the city.
Okay. So, early on, we expected that we would not only be paying FPNL for undergrounding their utilities, we'd be paying all the low-voltage companies that exist in the city. The good news is that we've pretty much boiled it down to having to pay what is really a partial to Atlantic Broadband. AT&amp;T and Comcast have completed their work undergrounding already, so we did not have to pay them to do their undergrounding. And we've been working with, between Ed and Paul, we've been working with, negotiating with Atlantic Broadband, that still has the most above-ground communications equipment that would be in the wiring undergrounded. There's a slight possibility, we still might have a payment or make to one of the other low-voltage ones, but right now, this is the amount of $139,000 for Collins Avenue undergrounding of Atlantic Broadband.
And while we are very, very near the completion of Phase 1, that's the section from Hallover Beach City Limits to 826 or 163rd, we will accomplish the last piece of that work tomorrow with FPL. Atlantic Broadband is the holdout, and FPL cannot, and will not, remove their overhead facilities, their poles and everything, until all of the low voltage are off of those poles. And right now, the only remaining low-voltage equipment on the utility poles south of 163rd Street are Atlantic Broadband. They're not active. They're deadlines, but it is against the law for us to remove them, even though I have been told, "Go cut the lines down." I can't do that.
Give me a pair of those pruning chairs.
I can't do that.
Let's, we get after the hurricane. When they said we couldn't cut their lines, we cut their lines, and we got the city back up. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. I didn't realize that was illegal. Can you just clarify why we have to pay for them to do that?
Federal Communications Commission gives them the opportunity to recover their costs. The other utilities, low voltage I'm speaking of, you've seen the numbers that we've paid FPL, but the other utilities have considered the contribution made by the city, putting in all of the conduit and providing all of the right-of-way access to be an asset to their hardening program. Atlantic Broadband didn't quite see it that way.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Do we hear a motion for the conversion fees?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Okay. Last reso. Thank you, Paul. Item 10K.
A resolution approving an agreement with Don Casino Productions, Inc. to provide talent and production services for various city events throughout the year.
Honorable Mayor and Commission, Don Casino Productions is an entertainer provider, entertainment provider, I should say. We've used them for a few events. We'd like to be able to continue to use them when they have, when they're the exclusive agent for the act in South Florida, if it's something that we want to do. So, we're requesting this contract to have this not-to-exceed amount, so that then we can negotiate when there's an event coming up, if they have an act that we think would be a good fit, and it's an exclusive act to them.
Understood. Any questions?
No.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. We have three public speakers tonight.
Good evening. For the record, Keith Oliver, Tropicana Condominium, 15645 Collins Avenue. It's on the border of Hallover County Park and next to the new Sunny Isles Beach Ritz Carlton Residences. Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, and our public, first, I want to support the Park and Beach No Smoking Ban. Thank you very much for working on that. In New Jersey, it worked very well. And thank you all for the art, the trees, and the landscape beautification of our city. Tonight, I'm here to speak about cats. Last meeting, when I was watching at home, there was, on the agenda, an ordinance about nuisance and defining and feeding animals that I thought was going to be moved over to this meeting. It was gonna be moved over. But anyway, I prepared something to speak about it. And just to let you know a little background, my wife, Yvonne, loves cats and owned her cat named Cutie for many years. I also feel cats are pretty cool, all right? Before my mom passed, she visited our Tropicana condo pool deck when one street cat came to my mom like milk. I adopted this friendly cat into my home, but it would never come to me until I changed the name to Tookie. When I called Tookie and tapped on my thigh, she would jump immediately and lay next to me on the couch. Unbelievable. A week later, I realized Tookie was pregnant, and we were soon leaving for a month of travel. Luckily, a friend in Aventura took Tookie, and five healthy kittens were born while we were gone, and all found good homes. Another time in New Jersey, on a sunny day, I was laying a long brick walkway along my raised box of vegetables, raspberries, and after finishing the walkway, I found a large, fresh pile of cat feces right in the middle of the new walkway. So, how to handle this? Anybody? No? Well, I removed the feces, I cleaned the brick, and placed a two-inch chunk of fresh tuna on the clean spot. Okay? Well, so what do you think happened? Next morning, I go out, and I found a dead mouse in the exact spot where the tuna was. Seems this cat was thanking me, and he never crapped there again. Amazing, you know? So, like the saying goes, don't crap where you eat, right? So, that's a true story. Brings me to my problem. The problem is, cats being fed and overfed in Hallover, Hallover Park, come nightly to sleep on our Tropicana condo lounge chairs and pool deck. We're right on the border of Hallover Park. At night, cats from Hallover climb onto our warm car roofs and scratch paint. These cats are often overfed and vomit on condominium grasses. After being fed, these cats urinate and defecate, crap on the Tropicana grass, After being fed, these cats urinate and defecate, crap on the Tropicana grass where residents have stepped in large piles of soft feces. I've tried the tuna, and they never crap there again, but they just move ten feet over. So it really works, but they stay in the area. The cat leftover food in Hallover Park attracts ants, bugs, raccoons, and rodents. The stagnant water containers left by cat feeders breeds mosquitoes. Cat fights at night sound like screaming babies and awaken residents. This year, cases of rabies were found near to Sunny Isles Beach, and feral cats carry ticks and fleas. Also, cat feeders parked on Tropicana driveway walk into Hallover Park to give water and overfeed the cats. So now, I think you all know me well enough that I wouldn't come here to complain about something without offering a possible solution. One solution is, similar to Commissioner Sally Hayman's very successful area designated for the Hallover Dog Park, creating one designated cat feeding station by Hallover Park North Walkway Bathroom Area may help keep it clean and, and remove a problem that's close to our city. Hallover welcomes a dog area, so why should we discriminate against cats? For a designated cat station to be successful, there needs to begin strict and immediate enforcement with warning citations in all Hallover non-feeding areas. One designated sanitary cat feed area will allow a controlled, more clean, safe, insect-free park and community. Conscientious park personnel have warned feeding offenders, and it is against the law, and they have signs there in the park, but they, the personnel warn the feeding offenders who repeatedly deny disrespect and disregard park employees. Currently, when park personnel need a Dade County police officer to cite feeding offenders, there are no results, because cat feeders know they can be gone before police arrive. Happens all the time. They know, just feed them, and we're gone before, if they call somebody, it takes them, you know how long it takes some, another county to respond. My question, do designated park personnel have authority to cite first offenders with written warnings? And I'm sure one designated feed station would make many people happy and keep our city neighborhoods and parks cleaner and safer. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask that all interested Commissioners and Manager Russo communicate with Commissioner Hayman to support this feed station. And, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right? Yep, thank you.
So, if something can be done, you know, communication, I'm, I'm sure I can send this email out, and so you'll know all my-
Actually, the resolution that got postponed is actually about designated spots for feeding. It wasn't anything, but the-
Cat folks felt it was anti-cat, and it was a lot of miscommunication about that, so we're, we're-
Still working on it.
So Chris has a meeting?
Yeah, we had a meeting.
We're working on it. Obviously, we have no jurisdiction over the park, but, but we can, we can certainly speak to Sally.
Friendly neighbors and-
I think we all feel your pain.
Yes. And we work very well with Sally.
Yeah, Sally's great.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, Ms. Marinoff?
Yes.
Yes. I don't want to, I don't want to say your first name incorrectly, so I'm, I'm trying.
I asked you, you did.
Okay, say that again?
You did.
Yeah, very nice, thank you. Just your name and your address for the record.
One-eight-five-four-zero, North Bay Road.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a problem in the Golden Shore with the camera. We don't have any camera. A lot of people take the red light on Collins Avenue. When you come out from Navarro, they can wipe you off, they don't even see you. So I called the city hall, they said they don't put any camera. I called the police.
Yeah, yeah, pull, pull the mic, just, just put the mic in front of you. That's good, thank you.
I called the police, they said they don't get involved with the camera.
Yeah. Yeah, so just so to be clear, that's not our road, so we don't have the, we don't have the jurisdiction to put the camera on the road. We, we can request it from the state DOT, but that's, but we don't own those, we don't control the traffic lights.
Collins Avenue not belong to Sunny Isles?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Collins Avenue, Lehman Causeway, and one-sixty-third Street don't belong to Sunny Isles, and the lights don't, the, the streetlights don't belong to Sunny Isles. So we can request, you know, we can, we can ask them politely to say, "Hey, we're getting requests, can we put a camera in?" But we can't, we can't put the camera on there.
Because it's a lot of accident.
I understand.
Like, can I say to me, "Don't walk on Collins Avenue." You know, I have big dog, you know? I walk on Collins Avenue, when you see me, go, go home. Don't even walk in your neighborhood, because everybody driving like Maniac, they don't even, you know, they texting, and you don't have any camera. So it's very, very, not the camera can, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Not to happen, but it's really dangerous.
But I don't disagree with you, because I come off of Atlantic Island where I live, and same thing, people aren't paying attention, and they run through the light, and especially coming from Lehman. But I think what we can do is, the city manager can certainly ask DOT, request from DOT that, that there's a, you know, you know, for a camera there.
You're asking for a red light camera at a hundred and-
And eighty-fifth Street.
Hundred-and-eighty-fifth Street.
Hundred-and-eighty-fifth, we, we come out.
Red light camera.
Yeah, red light camera. You know, and one-eighty-fifth and Collins. Yeah.
And I see we talk about the light, because it's really, really bad out the drive there, and nobody can see you. And about the worker across the street and all the condominium, this is disaster to our neighborhood. First of all, we don't have sidewalk. You walk on the street, you have the truck from across the street with the sand, with cement, with the tile, they're coming at five, five-thirty in the morning, they cover all the front in the houses with the grass, and if you have raining the day before, they pull up all the grass, so you have mud. If you want to park in your parking garage, forget about it, because you take all the dirt from outside to your home, which is disaster. If you tell them not to park here, they call you dumb, they call you all kind of name. I stay in the middle of the grass, I say, "Drive over me." I don't have any problem, you know what I mean? And maybe somebody going to wake up. They park there every single morning.
So you're telling me that the, the dump trucks for the, for the work on Collins?
The truck for all the condominium.
Okay, so the-
Across the street, they're coming from one-eighty-six.
The construction trucks?
Right.
The construct, okay, go ahead.
Right. They park all over the houses and the North Bay Road, you know, near Navarro, one-eighty-fifth Street, one-eighty-sixth Street, Atlantic Boulevard, they park there, and you can talk to them.
Chief, is that legal?
There actually is a lot of construction going on in Aventura, so it may be, technically, should, they should be-
But if they're using the neighborhood as a staging area to go across the street, that's not, that's not proper.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what, that's what you're saying, I understand, yeah.
You know, we called the police, the police came, it was fine for half hour, because I helped them to move the truck.
Yeah, because they're paying attention, sure.
And then the day after, it's the same story. You know?
Yeah, so we need to figure out is, is what, what buildings they're working at, and then nail the developer. It's the developer, that, because you're not, because the truck driver's like a, like an independent guy, he's not going to pay attention.
You know, they don't speak any English.
Yeah.
You're not speaking English?
Yeah.
You know, I don't speak Spanish.
This is, he's not practicar español, so I got to practice my Spanish, so anyways.
But ultimately, it's really, the, the point is, if it's under the developer's, you know, control-
That's what we have to figure out.
-to make the change, we have to figure out which can, which building it is, which developer- Can I just, Stan, can you, can you, because this is a non, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I am almost on a daily basis sending pictures of this happening, and I know that we have cited buildings when we were able to figure out. Can you speak a little bit about that?
Yes, we've been working on this for at least a couple of years. There's a number of projects that we've cited along Collins for allowing the workers to be in your neighborhood. So we've actually issued them citations. Part of the problem we have is figuring out which building is doing it, but the buildings have also notified all of their contractors and subcontractors that they can't go through Golden Shores. But due to the, I guess, the volume of construction workers that they have on site, it's an ongoing process. So I've been trying to enforce it from the perspective of citing the projects, all the way down to, I've had parking enforcement patrolling specifically your area almost every hour to give parking citations to anybody that stops.
They don't do it, Stan. They don't do it.
I know.
Because the guy said, "I'm not working in this area, I'm not the guy here," you know, they're sitting on the phone under the trees.
Right, it's a very challenging thing to enforce, but I can tell you that, and we spoke a little bit-
Can we be undercover? Can we be undercover? I, I can be undercover, you know?
We spoke a little bit before the meeting, and we agreed to have a follow-up-
I'll give you one of those sirens.
I'm so bad, I'm really bad.
We had a, we, we agreed to have a follow-up meeting the first week of December to discuss some of these specific neighborhood issues.
Yeah.
But I can certainly, if the problem is at five-thirty in the morning, then I can have parking enforcement there at five-thirty in the morning. So we can absolutely adjust the schedule to try to help.
Well, and also, five-thirty in the morning would be the one, it's the most disturbing, because they're in the, you know, they got a big truck going through your neighborhood at five-thirty in the morning, it's a residential neighborhood, people are still sleeping, they're just getting up, and, you know, it's a mess, so.
[inaudible]
Yeah.
[inaudible]
You got it too, Jody? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
[inaudible]
I understand. Yeah, okay.
I said before, I think, you know, when you go to the beach and you're not allowed to park, to put the big rack, nobody can go to park on the side, because the only chance they can work, they can park, they can park on the road, they can't park on the road, because nobody can go in and out.
Yeah, yeah.
Or to put like chain, and also to keep, because few years ago, the city did grass, it was beautiful. You're coming to one-eighty-fifth to one-eighty-sixth, it was really nice, just to watch it, you know what I mean? And now they're ruining everything and everything, you can't even walk with the dog, because everything, it's muddy and disgusting, and a lot of mosquitoes. And it's really like, you know, we are not on the back of the bus, we have all this condominium, and we suffering.
Yeah.
And all the worker coming from across the street, they're walking, you know, they're across the street, they don't care, it's green light, red light, they don't even see you. They're walking in one-eighty-fifth to North Bay Road, they're walking one-eighty-sixth, you know, five, six of them, like, you know, not even long, you know?
Yeah.
And it's not right. It's not right. We don't have like peace and quiet. You always has to be alert where you're going to attack you. You have some robbery, they're coming to me or to her, we can watch your camera? They don't walk to my house, because I have Doberman. Even the police care for my Doberman, you know? But you have camera, so put camera, you know?
Yeah, understood.
They sound like to make it possible, you register, just to add to what you said.
Okay, okay.
For some reason.
I'm sorry, can you come up to-
Yeah, you got to come up to the mic, okay. Wait, wait a second, just, just, is that, no, I know, but, but I just want to make sure she's finished, so hold on one second, so.
And now about the worker, they do the, you know, with the hours, when the work across the street next to me, the building house, you know, in Yom Kippur, the work. On Saturday, the work, sometime in Sunday, the work. They don't have hours, they start sometime at quarter to seven in the morning. It's really annoying. I have two kids in college, they're coming home, they're doing like tests and everything, they put music loud, they don't care, you know, they're bringing the truck, they're loan, front of my house, and all the racket's on the, on the road, and then every car walking by, all the, the racks, it's on my driveway. And I'm like fanatic cleaning, like hosing my, you know what I mean? So nobody do anything. I don't want to complain, because it's going to be my neighbor for the future, and I really like suffering, like the work sometimes, they don't have light until seven, eight o'clock, and now the time it changed, so they, they go early on. But they don't have any hours, nobody tell them anything, and the complaints guy doesn't, sorry, doesn't work in my area. Every time you stop them, and you usually, you don't see them around, I'm not working here, you know? But he has Sunny Isles cars, I say, "Who is paying you guys if you don't work here?" So this is like, and everybody zoom like it's highway. We don't have police around, nobody watch, and by the time you call the police, because next door, nobody lives there, we have somebody live there for two, three months, they took everything from her boat, and they have like apartment there in the back of the house, if it's pillow, if it's towel, if it's a mattress, everything. And who discover? My dog, ten o'clock at the night, he smells cigarette, he's allergic to cigarette. You know, by the time you call the police, the police come, he come by himself, until the partner coming, forget about it, they jump to the water, they go to the other side, you know, they're really smart. I say, "Come on, I help you." No, madam, stay back. I stay back. And another thing with the Publix area by, by North Bay Road, you have trees, you have grass, you know, I'm calling the city hall, you have the drain, all the drain, it's covered with leaves. When it's raining and you have hurricane, the water doesn't go down. I call the city hall, it's not my problem. I call the Publix worker, it's not my problem. I say, "You know what? I'm not, I'm not doing AT&amp;T," you know? And by the time you answer the phone, by the time this, it's going to be flood. Nobody take care of that. I complained to the guy with the car, the complaints, he say, "It's not our problem." So I don't know who to give this issue, because it's full, and nobody clean it.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a lot of, like I have, like flat tire at least once in two weeks, you know? Because you have nails all over. So before I go to my driveway, I stop the car, I check to see if I have nails, and then I go on my driveway. So this is a sin, you know? Or if you complain, or you tell the people, because we have house next to us, nobody lives there, because they have problem with the city, so everybody park there. And people park there, they, they working across the street, they coming, they pee, they wash themselves with their hose, and you call the police, and they say, "We live here." Nobody do anything. It's another problem. And we have the, by Publix, every night we have party with fishermen, with the music, people fish all night, and it's so loud, so loud, and nobody to complain. And now I'm concerned about the Marina. Everybody talking about the Marina, they're going to build by Publix, we live on the water, we really don't need this traffic. So this is another concern.
Okay.
The end.
The end? Okay, thank you for coming. I think Stan's going to be your new best friend.
I know.
Yeah, I think that's the bottom line, yeah, yeah. So, did you want to add something, John?
I, I just want to add a couple things.
Just, just your name and address for the record, and then, and then-
Because I think it's very important.
Yeah, your, your name and address for the record?
Alvaro Gordo, M.D., I live in Sunny Isles, one-sixty-seven-eleven Collins Avenue, Upper Penthouse Number Eight. I've been in Sunny Isles for about nineteen years now, okay? What the lady's saying is terrible, but it's true. But what really gets me is, we all know construction, the trucks and all that, they're, they totally disregard any, any rule. I mean, they're just waiting to pour concrete, and they put one truck after another there, you know, this, that, nobody does anything. But what is worse, I mean, we know construction is a temporary thing, what is worse is all these trucks every day that deliver food, they deliver uniforms, you know, all these hotels and condominiums, we all have huge ramps, most of them. They park the truck right there, and the man goes with his thing, just delivering, it takes his time, takes half an hour, that line is completely obstructed. It causes a real problem. It's safety. Sometimes, when I try to leave my place, I can see what is coming through, because I have two trucks, I have the bus that stops there, and two trucks, they are delivering to Newport, that they can go into Newport, Newport has a place to go. What I'm saying is, police does nothing. I brought this, you know, they, they see it, as much as I see it. I have never seen police stopping. Now, if I stop to one of these trucks, I'm sure if I do it, they just give me a ticket right away. I mean, you just cannot obstruct the line, especially when you have, and this has been done constantly, okay? And has never-
So Mr. Gordo, to be clear, State Road, Chris? I hate to tell you, but they have the, they have the right to stop for some-
But wait a minute, it's a-
No, just to be clear.
State Road or not?
No, I'm just saying-
If I do something in Collins, you're going to give me a ticket, right?
Hold on, hold on, let, let's be clear about the delivery trucks, so Chris, Stan, you want to?
Well, what I was going to say is that, from a parking enforcement perspective, we're there every day, and Collins is absolutely a priority. So I know for a fact, we've issued, we issue tickets daily for Collins-
To big trucks, to delivery trucks.
For exactly what you're talking about. Is that going to resolve the problem? No, it's not, but-
They don't want to pull in a lot of times, because it takes too much time to pull in.
If you are strong enough and if you take it, I mean-
I, I will tell you, we've been very proactive about this for a number of years because of the complaints. And so I would like to say that it has helped. And so I would like to say that it has helped. We've directed people to pull into the loading zone, exactly what you're talking about. If they don't, um, on my way in this morning, I saw our parking officer issuing a ticket for exactly what you're talking about. For them, sometimes, well, not sometimes, all the time, it's more convenient, exactly what you said, to stop on the road, go in and do a delivery.
Three P M. in the middle of a rush time, I mean.
I know, it's terrible. I don't disagree.
I said, that's one thing. The other thing that is even to me very bothersome because, like this lady, I don't walk in Collins anymore. Walking in Collins is like, I, I still don't understand. If I'm walking in the sidewalk and all of a sudden, there's two guys passing me in a bike zooming through me, two centimeters away from me, I cannot hear them. Is that legal? They can go through the sidewalk like that? I, is that what they are supposed to do? I'm asking, I don't know.
Good, Stan.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'm gonna have.
Well, somebody must know the answer to that.
I, I'm not sure.
So somebody should know.
Yeah, we have an ordinance on skateboards, skateboards and those segways.
Bicycles, bicycles, I mean.
I know, I know.
If this guy gets you in the back, breaks your back.
Yeah, I don't disagree, yeah.
It would be great.
Yeah, we haven't, but obviously, obviously.
I don't hear, I don't have the feeling there's somebody coming.
So on the bicycles, to be honest with you, the whole idea was to create an, that's why we built the bridges. And the, and the pedestrian bridge on one sixty third was to create an interior pathway for the bicycles. And for bicycles and pedestrians to get them off Collins.
No, 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 but these people go.
I, I understand, they go on the sidewalk. I know.
They don't cross Collins.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I understand. And it's, yeah.
I mean, it seems to me, and then all these little things that they.
I've got another person that's been waiting, but, but.
I'm sorry, no, I mean, what I'm saying is, we're trying to find some solutions.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna say something. We come here to open our hearts to you and we expect you to engage. So when Maggie tells you all these things and she opened up and we opened up to you, I'm sure you have compelling reasons to approve all these things that you approve. But we'll appreciate that you engage and you explain, which you didn't. You sit there and you are almighty and you just vote, but you didn't tell us why you vote for that. I'm sure you have appalling reasons, compelling reasons. So anyway, whatever. As soon as we know about this thing, please, somebody will do something. Or just do like you're saying, just do it a small way for the bicycles, make some sort of regulations or something, okay?
Thank you. Jody, you've been very patient. So, Jody Joseph?
Hi. Jody Joseph, I reside in Golden Shores, one eighty five sixty North Bay Road. I have concerns, we're going back almost three years.
Jody, will you pull the mic right in front of you? Could you talk softly?
Over three years that I've been bringing to people's attention and even just speaking with a few people on the board now. They were shocked to hear some of my concerns, which is why I'm doing this now. I have a list and as I said, this has been going on for quite some time, so I appreciate your patience. Eighteen wheelers in our area. Sometimes we have two and three eighteen wheelers parked at a time in Golden Shores, right where. I'm still trying to find out who exactly owns that property. It's right next to the, um, where the old Publix parking lot used to be, the brown fence, where all the, now they call it Dezer, Dezer Way, which is another question, how, who approved Dezer Way, you know? We're all trying to find out that one. Should be Golden Shores, I think. That's just a few people's personal opinion. But you have so many eighteen wheelers parked there and we've asked them politely not to. And it is an issue, as my neighbor said, um, most of them are rude, disrespectful. And the thing I will not tolerate is when they have their engines going and the fumes are just leaking from the cars. But it's just amazing, you know, I get all these kind emails that everybody's sending out, oh, mosquito control, control, we're spraying. But think about this, it's just common sense, is it not? They're allowing these trucks to park over there. And I am saying allowing because I live there and I walk a lot. I have three dogs, so I see what's going on pretty much all day long. And there's very few tickets being written, if any, if I may say so. I understand, Mr. Morris, maybe they're telling you they are. But I could tell you from firsthand experience, the issues that we've experienced, why I've been told they cannot issue tickets. So it's just strange. I mean, you have these big trucks parked. It's like little koi ponds for mosquitoes. How can that be okay with all the problems that we're being told about mosquitoes and the spraying? And yet it's okay to park these trucks, besides the exhausts, besides the fact that I believe that most of the high rises in Sunny Isles are being built on our back in Golden Shores. That's why we've been pleading for gates, a gate, however you wanna do it, I don't care. Put up poles, automatic. I'm not discussing what system I think we should install at the moment. But it's something that should be discussed as we've been asking for years. We're actually one of the few neighborhoods that do not have the gates. You can go by Eastern Shores, Hallendale, Hollywood. Golden Beach is different, I understand that. We're one of the few areas that do not have any kind of gates. And again, if we had that, at least we would have cameras taking pictures of the license plates coming in and coming out. I understand the whole rap, we're on the water, we can get robbed from the water. But most of the areas that we reside in are on the water. But for some reason, well, I think I know why, so do my neighbors, why everybody is putting off giving us a gate. It's because without our area, and again, I just want to be very clear, I have documentation for everything I'm saying. I have pictures for everything. And it's quite disheartening that no one has really cared to do anything. We have, and I didn't know this, I mean, we have no peace. This is just new that I saw this going on at five thirty in the morning. They're parked on both sides of the road. And I said, could you please move? I don't even wanna honk the horn in my neighborhood at five thirty. You know, even people that work are sleeping. And I said, why can't you go in the parking lot? I guess it's the old public, the Publix parking lot where all the employees go. And they said, don't you see, it's chained off? And I said, how ironic, that's chained off? But we can't have anything chained off? We, we just can't. We need the security. We have to stop this. We have the, um, as my neighbor said, we have flats, we have rudeness. We have just so much going on in our area. That's just one issue with the trucks. And actually, we had a few trucks where the engines were going and nobody, this is a little long, but as I'm saying, this has been three years in the waiting for me. And there was nobody in the trucks. So we called code enforcement. Code enforcement had to call the police because they said they're not authorized to write tickets. They first cannot just put a ticket on a truck or a car parked there. They have to contact the driver and reprimand them. And then they determine whether or not they write a ticket. So, and, and I know that because we've called and made complaints. And believe me, I'd like to really find out the facts of how many tickets have really been written. Cause we've never seen it. And we've called a complaint and they said, well, we can't, we can't. That, with that being said, that's an issue right there. And as I said, the mosquitoes are a problem. And we're all so curious about the code enforcement. And I'm not here to complain. We do have a lot of issues. I'm here to try to just work together and finally solve these problems. It's been going on too long. And as I said, other areas, they don't tolerate what Golden Shores has had to tolerate. And I think that's fair to say and, you know, everyone that lives there agrees, that at least I communicate with. And again, I'm just curious quickly, we'd like to know, people are always asking, how come it's Dezer Way? If somebody could give us an answer, I've asked and asked and asked and I've heard he donated eight hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. Seventy-five thousand. I just would like an answer, a straight answer would be appreciated. And the code enforcement, it's interesting because this is another bad issue. There's a few of them that are wonderful. When someone's wonderful, I greatly appreciate it. In fact, I wrote a letter, I believe it's to Helene, is it Forbes? What's her name? Yeah, because there's one gentleman who just could not be kinder. And he does his job and some people don't. And whenever you have a problem, you see them driving around, as my, my neighbor said, and it's quite frustrating. They're driving around, they're parked under a tree. They have their earbuds in, listening to music. They're eating and they're on their cellphone. So if you have an issue, you go up to them and they're like, I'm sorry, this isn't my area. But aren't they on the clock? You know, I mean, some of this, sometimes this is two and three hours a day in different locations. So I feel if someone's on the clock, they should be able to solve a problem. You know, I just, I don't understand that. I don't know if people aren't watching, you know, or checking work cards. I don't know how that is. But it's frustrating because what we're told is, if we have a problem, we have to write an email. And honestly, there's not enough hours in the day. I can't, I don't wanna do their job. They're getting paid. I have my own jobs. I have my own business. I have my own, I mean, I, I could literally work, we work eighteen hour days. And I think that code enforcement should be more on the ball. They're getting paid. And again, some are wonderful. And others just are not doing anything. They're just driving around, eating up time. And for instance, lawns aren't even being, I mean, some people, they don't do their lawns for three and four months. And it may not be nothing, but when you live there and you have pets and you're trying to walk, the other gentleman was talking about flea infestation. When people aren't doing their lawns, how come I have to write an email? I think that when code enforcement is driving around, again, it's common sense. This is their job, not mine or my neighbor's, to say, okay, we've already had a complaint about this address. They're still not mowing the lawn. This is two weeks later. This is three weeks later. And what they say is they can't do anything. It's our responsibility again to write another email. I don't, I don't think that's fair. I think they should be doing their job.
Can I stop you for a moment, Jody?
Yeah.
Stan, can you speak to that a little bit, please, about are, are they assigned to an area and how that works? Or are they at large to the city? And what should Jody do the next time this happens?
The code enforcement officers are assigned to an area. We've divided the city up to, into zones. And the parking officers all basically patrol the city, starting from one end of the city to the other end throughout the day.
So in what circumstance would someone ever say, this is not my area, but they're in the area?
Hanging out.
Yeah, they, no one should be in the area hanging out at all. So we're definitely gonna look into that as well as all of your concerns. In terms of the area, what it may be is that the parking enforcement may be telling you that it isn't their area from a code enforcement perspective. They may, they may be there just to do parking. But I have to research more and find out. I'll find out.
Thank you. Also, again, on our backs in Golden Shores, we have these huge transport trucks coming in and I, again, I have pictures, where you have eight, ten, twelve cars on a transportation truck for the people coming and going. And this is in our neighborhood. And they just stop in the middle of the street. They just don't care. And this is in front of all of our homes. And you say, you know, you ask them, you know, where, and I ask politely, and I'm very polite. You know, where are you coming from? Uh, oh, around the neighborhood. Well, I don't accept that answer. I'm gonna push further. Where around the neighborhood? Because I live here and there's certain rules and regulations that you, you must abide by. Finally, you get out of them, well, it's Aquilina, it's the Porsche, it's here, it's there. And again, I may be going a little bit in circles, but to what you were saying about the parking, how come it's not mandatory that these high rises being built? There isn't space allocated for their tenants to get furniture delivered, to have their cars dropped off and picked up? I mean, I understand they want a nicer restaurant. They want a nicer spa. But there has to be space for each and every high rise, but there isn't. So they come to our area. And I believe again, that's why they keep on giving us an excuse. Well, it's hard to put a gate up or a bar up. How could it be car, hard? We're right across the street from the Porsche where they're, that building actually lifts automobiles up with the gas in all the cars to the apartments. And they can do that and that's acceptable, but they can't just put little gates up in our area. I think there's only two entrances in Golden Shores, three, and there's one already blocked off. And again, to have the cameras because there is a lot of riffraff and thievery going on. Somebody actually had a knife held to their throat, but they don't wanna say much about it because there's so much B and Bs going on. So it's hush, hush, other than the gossip going on within the neighbors. B and B, that's a whole other issue. Maybe every eighth house has B and Bs going on. But just also getting back to code enforcement and just looking for a way to solve the problem, rather me being up here, I hope I don't come off as being nasty or condescending. I do not mean to be. But let's solve this problem together. We have a neighbor in the area who was building a house. He never got the proper permits from code enforcement. And this is another thing, we have to, code compliance has to be more on the ball. They're being paid for this. This house went on for months and months and months, as many other homes did. And how did, I mean, they had many complaints, neighbors were complaining about these specific residences. I mean, common sense tells you, there's ten, twelve, fourteen cars in a home where nobody's living, construction trucks. They should know, you look up in the computer, it's the same homes over and over and over again. And what happened right next to our house, and the neighbor is doing the right thing. I don't want to say anything negative about the neighborhood. They promise they're taking care of it. They had people working on the house. And I was at a business meeting, it's the one few times my husband picked my daughter up from school. It's around three fifteen. They pull up in the driveway and there is actually employees. One guy is, because they never remember, this is what I don't understand, they never put in for a permit. Therefore, I was told they really didn't do anything wrong. This is how crazy, try to listen to what I'm saying because you're gonna say I'm making no sense. They didn't put in for a permit. So the fact that these workers were coming onto our property because they had no water. My husband pulls up with my little girl and he's relieving himself, literally, literally, with everything hanging out on our house, on my wall, because we have water right next to where he was relieving himself. So he was able to clean himself as well. That, that was, and we've been telling people the story for a long time. Everybody looks pretty surprised. No one's ever been informed of this before? Yeah, but, right. But we told, we told the police, we told a lot of people. And it's amazing, nothing was really done. And it actually happened again and I witnessed it. And I just flipped out. I couldn't believe that someone had the audacity to do this two times in a row. Now, if it was another neighborhood, believe me, they'd be on the news in handcuffs for exposing themselves at three fifteen in the afternoon. Am I mistaken on that, you think? Anybody?
If you catch him, if you catch him, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't remember you telling me this, but did you call the police and they didn't come?
We told everybody. We were outraged. And I called Ms. Forbes. And thi- this is the insanity of how, let's try to work together and change things. And what I was told is, she can't do anything because they didn't do anything wrong. Had they done this legally and put in for a permit, it's mandatory to get a potty, whatever those outdoor potties are.
That doesn't sound, that just doesn't.
Thank you, porta potties. And they didn't do that. So had, if they put in for the license and they were on our property, relieving themselves.
But Jody, if they don't have a porta potty, he can't pee on your house. So you, you would call the police and basically, cause it's trespassing. The guy's in your lawn, peeing on your house.
Well, you're making it sound easy. I agree, it's common sense, but nothing happened, is my point.
No, I understand. But my point is, if, if the police didn't catch the guy, if we didn't call the police when it's happening and they, they, they can't, they don't know where the guy lives, they can't arrest the guy if they can't find him.
Oh, we know. I asked the neighbor for, the neighbors for the, I'm not an idiot. I wanted to know who he is. I wanted the work permit. I wanted to know who he is.
Yeah, I understand.
I wanted the paycheck stub. You know, we have to do something. And it may not be important to somebody that doesn't live in the area.
Yeah.
I, I think it should be important regardless if you have children or not. But what I was told, my point is, which I think is just appalling, is that from Helene's, from your, your office, is that nothing was done wrong because they didn't put in for a permit. So they didn't have to have a porta potty. If they put in for the porta potty and the permit and had the porta potty, then they would be in trouble. Does that make any sense to you? That, exactly. She understands our frustration, how this has been going on for so long. And this is someone exposing himself. This is not something that I think is acceptable anywhere, except it's happening in Golden Shores. It seems to be okay. That's, you know, just another issue. And had our code enforcement been a little bit more on the ball and they noticed all the construction trucks in front of the house, they should have been writing them up, not the neighbors going around and having to send in emails and policing. You know, I don't have time for this. A lot of other people don't. But that's just our problem with the code enfor, and not all of them again. I don't want to say that it's all of them, it's just a few. See what happened at our next door, okay. The drag racing, that's a beautiful one. Again, I'm gonna keep on going back to, that's why we need some kind of security. We have drag racing in our area. Nobody wants to believe me, but again, I have the pictures. So I don't want anything, God forbid, to happen because I'm telling everybody now, I, I wanna keep things safe or safer. They have the nerve to come to our area and drag race because it's, if you wanna get away with anything in the area, come to Golden Shores. You can get away with murder. And I know that because my girlfriends have told me this, that have kids. Come to Golden Shores, drag race. And they do. And I, I mean, I was with my dog trainer and my husband. We couldn't believe they're doing this. And I'm like, you guys really can't do this. This is not cool. You need to take off. I'm calling the cops. They said, well, we're gonna finish our race and then you can call the cops. I said, really? I have you on tape. I have your car. I said, "Really, I have you on tape, I have your car, I have your license plates." And then the dog trainer kind of said, "Yeah, and I'm a witness." And then they started antagonizing this situation. And I guess, you know, we show them what we have, and then they just puttered away, you know? But it was just, it's something we shouldn't have to go through. Again, I think we need a little help in our area, as every other area has, and if we had gates, this wouldn't happen, because we'd have some kind of, again, I'm not saying what we should have, whether it's a clicker, whether it's a card, I don't care what it is, something like Sun Pass on the car, you know, you put the Sun Pass up, but we d- we definitely need something. And the Uber drop-offs down Collins Avenue, that's another issue, is crazy. Why, I know there's a lot of stationary police cars, with nobody in them. We really need people, the policemen, giving more tickets out. Uber just stops in the middle of Collins. The buses, we understand, we need that, they're wonderful for the people that need the transportation. But you know that the traffic is so bad down Collins, and all of a sudden Uber just jams, because again, if they're going to do the high-rises, there's really not sufficient drop-off and drop-off areas. Also, I don't know, I'm sure I'm not the only one that witnessed this, but you have the large vans from the, um, the airlines, you have the pilots, you have the co-pilots, and you'll have like twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, forgive my terminology, what do they say now, stewards, stewardesses?
Flight attendants.
Flight attendants, forgive me. All, I mean, and they just stop down Collins, and I mean, it's at least a five, ten-minute ordeal getting out. And I understand they need to be transported somewhere, but why aren't they going to the hotel or the condo where they're staying? You can't just stop down Collins Avenue, the traffic's bad enough, as is, I'm still not done, the construction workers, that's just another issue, I'm not even gonna get into, that's just really, really bad. But just to give you a heads up, I have some girlfriends that live any, from Bay Harbor, Baal Harbor, all across our area as well. And you know what the instructions are? I can't understand why they would all walk in our area, as mentioned, there's no sidewalks, plus stay on the beach side, because there's no pedestrian, you don't have to cross a street, it's much easier, isn't it? You just walk straight through, right? And then you just cross the one street, and you go where all the buses are. I'm sorry, I look like I'm really boring you, Mr. Dion, but I've been, been waiting for this for quite some time, and I think these issues are at least important to myself and my neighbors. What I was told, and this is my girlfriend's telling me this, so I know it's true, the high-rises told the workers that they do not want the workers walking on that side of the street, that they have to cross the street, because they don't want any of the owners or the tenants or the people staying in the hotel being inconvenienced. They like to come and go out of the condos at their own leisure, without having to wait for all, because there's hundreds of construction workers, all hours of the day. And I just said, "Are you kidding me, is that..." Because I couldn't figure out logically, why are they crossing, crossing over? That's just, have you guys ever heard that before? Did you know that? That's why they're all walking in Golden Shores?
It's the first time I'm doing it.
Because they're instructed to do so, yeah. And I, again, I believe my, um, my friends. I mean, I have so many more about, just kids in the area, we need tennis courts. I think parks are wonderful, but for anyone, if you're over six years of age, you know, kids that live here, you know, we can't keep on doing things for people that are here for two months, and they're going back to their country. I mean, you know, Surfside has it, so many areas have it, Miami Beach has it, even Ives area has tennis courts for children. I mean, you can't go on a swing when you're seven, eight, nine years old. Yeah, it's fun, but logically speaking, we need to keep our teenagers that live here, that go to school here, healthy. And we need, listen, thanks for the parks, and they're beautiful, but we, you know, let's try to make some room for tennis courts. I know we're lucky enough to have a soccer field, but let's keep our kids in mind, you know, and do something for them. There's, there's a few other issues with the parking, as we said, and it says, "No parking certain ways," or "You can't park in a certain area." And you question, "Well, how, how is this? How come these cars are parked here?" And you actually have the security guards, which I think is really disgraceful. Well, there's an exception to every rule. I don't ever want to hear that again. There should not be exceptions to rules. And again, it's gonna be very hard, I hope I don't ever get a parking ticket, because I must have fifty pictures of trucks, trailers, cars, I can go on and on and on and on and on, who are parked, and who, and I know do not get tickets, because they're back every single day. How are you gonna give tickets just to people in Sunny Isles, when you're not giving tickets to everyone? And I'm talking directly in our area as well. No stopping, no standing, no parking, period. So, if someone gets a ticket doing that, how can you, how, I mean, why would they have to pay a ticket? I'm not saying you don't, shouldn't pay a ticket, but what happened to Aquolina? I mean, how, how is that possible? How could some people park under these signs and get away with it? Just any idea on that? And, and being to, oh, and we were told, actually, that they got permission from the police. In our area, when we say, "You can't park here," they said, "Excuse me, ma'am, we have permission from the police. Sunny Isles Police Department gave us permission." So, this is just, want to fill you guys in, a few things to work on, that I think are important. So, to keep in mind, and as I said, there's several other issues, I'm not even gonna go into that right now. But just politely speaking, I'm not just babbling or wasting your time, or anyone, not that anyone's here, anyone else's time. I do have documentation to back up everything I'm saying. So, you know, let's all work together, we have a problem, let's just solve it, if you don't mind, if we can do that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Can, can I just ask?
Sure.
I, can anyone answer Jody's question, because this is before me, when the street was named for Deeser?
Well, if that happened, like, that was a while ago. I mean, was it about, I remember, I remember when it happened, but-
No, 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 it was many years ago.
No, 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 that's, this was years ago, this was like, this was a while ago.
It was before I was commissioner.
Yeah, they, I don't know that they put the sign up recently, but it was-
No, that took up around twelve-
I know the sign was last year, but the street was named a long time ago.
No, the sign has been there for a long time.
Yeah, the street was named a while ago.
Because I noticed it a few years ago.
It was from '12 or '13.
Yeah.
And I think it was after the playground donation.
The playground donation.
Was that it? Yeah.
And the school, I think it was for the computer room, the playground.
It was before my time, but it was, it was before my time as mayor, but I don't, but I remember, I think it was as a, as a result of some kind of donation.
I'll, I'll get the details for you, and, and you know-
But the sign might have went up recently, but it, but it got named a long time ago.
No, the sign, no, the sign has been there for a while.
By the way, I don't like namings, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we don't do that anymore.
I have nixed every naming that's ever, I believe you name things after people that are dead, not alive, so that's, that's my own, you know?
You're giving donations, so put your name.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, yeah.
And in fact, we asked about one issue, the risk of parking, you know, that park, they have the chain that they put up, right? Why can't, I don't know if that's new, I don't-
No, the chains have always been there, it's to not allow parking in front. And I can tell you, to your, to your point about when people are parked, if you want to request how many texts I send and calls that I personally make, this is an ongoing issue, I agree with you. And I, I do the same thing as you, you know, I live in the neighborhood. Every time I see this, I call, and, and they do come, especially at that park, because they park by the hydrant, it is, it is a major issue. And they do get tickets when you can, when they're caught.
And again, just people like, I understand Navarro, they have business to conduct, and they go long, and they're wonderful, and they have to make money, and they're wrong.
Actually, not for long, that's the good news. Yeah, they're gonna be gone, because, because we own the land now. Yeah, yeah, we acquired all that land, so everything, yeah.
So, and we think tennis court, right?
You know what, that might be a good spot for them, to be honest with you. No, no, but the truth is, when the, when we get this, you know, we got the sales center for the, we own all the land, except for the little house on the corner in your neighborhood, but we own, but we own it all. So, when Navarro's lease is up, you know, we'll actually, you know, we actually already own the land, but we had to let, let their lease run out, so.
And you have the, in Turnberry-
We got the Turnberry piece, we got Navarro, and we got the corner piece on Collins, where they were gonna build the office building, we, we-
Where we're staging the underground.
Yeah, where we're staging the undergrounding from. So, when that's all done, that might be a good spot for tennis courts, you know, yeah. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.